Good morning. Thank you very much for joining us today, October 28th, 2020. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm wondering if we, I'd heard we perhaps would have some public comment, but I don't see any one of our public here this morning.
I wanted to make one quick comment.
Okay.
Just wanted to make a comment because we still get criticism about the handling of COVID. And I want to say how yesterday, our state of county, how impressed I was really that our numbers have even gotten better relative to the other places in the state that were now 23rd for cases per 100,000 and 17th for hospitalizations. I was, I think both of those are better. And I was surprised we're still under 70 hospitalizations of Deschutes County residents, I think. So I just think that our health community, the health providers, as well as our health department have done a great job comparatively from what we can see. So just want to say that.
And each person in the community, you know, we're in masks, washing hands, just kind of slowing this spread, which is exactly where we started seven or eight months ago now, is the key to this thing. You know, the vaccines and the therapeutics are still being worked on. We're going to hear some good updates later today. But it is a function of the community. The holidays are coming up, having people getting together with family and mixing it up in closer settings. You know, there could be a byproduct of that, you know, Thanksgiving and Christmas even. So it's time to stay vigilant. But we're doing a good job.
And the other thing I think we honestly need to recognize is the fact that Deschutes County is home to five-star medical care. That was one of the outstanding features of our community. And I think this is truly indicative. Just as Dr. Richard Fawcett is here, got his degree from, I think Johns Hopkins. You know, we have some excellent doctors in our community and they're really doing a good job of taking care of people. So it's great to know we are under 70. So thank you, doctors, for all the, and the nurses and everyone out there, the frontline workers for stepping up. And really, we need to keep our community very aware. I know Halloween's coming up and there are some really wonderful ways that you can celebrate it. Remember that these are beaver colors that we're going to be celebrating. It's orange and black. So it's okay. We can do that. And it is Saturday night. And also, the time's going to change. So two fun things in one night. You'll get an extra hour of sleep. And please check our website for the recommendations for properly being safe but still celebrating Halloween. We, you know, our kids have lost too many things. So let's not have them completely lose Halloween. So we have a consent agenda?
There's quite a few things on the consent agenda, but I will pass it as a package. So I'll move approval of the whole consent agenda.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Okay. So that's good. Now we need to convene as the governing body for the Sun River Service District. We have consideration of board signature to appoint Robert Foster to the Sun River Service District Budget Committee.
I'd move board signature to appoint Robert Foster to the Sun River Service District Budget Committee.
And I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Okay. Now we're going to reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County. And we need to consider the board signature to reappoint Nora Ellison to the Blackbeet Ranch Service District Budget Committee.
Convening at the Blackbeet Ranch?
Yes, convening, sorry.
That's for us, yep. So as the Blackbeet Ranch service authority, so I'll move the Blackbeet Ranch Service District Budget Committee for Ms. Nora Ellison.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I just want to thank the, both of these people to serve, for serving on these, the service districts that we are the governing body for. But these are choices made in those communities. So appreciate that.
Yes, Nora's a reappointment and Robert Foster is a brand-new member of the committee. So Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Okay. And the chair votes yes. So thank you very much. We are now reconvening as the governing body of Deschutes County. The first item on our agenda should be presented by Cody Smith, please. Or maybe we're going to have Nick.
Yeah, sorry, I'm here now. I'll kick things off. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Cody Smith, Deschutes County Road Department. At your October 19th meeting, you, the board, considered a license agreement with the Tumalo Property Owners Association for installing a community wastewater collection system within public right-of-ways for various county roads in the Tumalo unincorporated area. At the end of that meeting, you had asked to, you wanted to consider the matter further. So Road Department is presenting the matter to you again this morning. The version of the license agreement that's before you this morning is the version that is recommended by Road Department staff. During our meeting last Monday, I think we were a little short on time. We didn't really have quite, we had some CDD staff that were on the line last time but didn't have an opportunity to provide input on the matter. So I wanted to give CDD a chance to provide that input this morning. I believe we have Nick Lealack and Todd Cleveland standing by here. But beyond that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions regarding the license agreement from the Road Department's perspective. I just want to make sure the board is aware and takes into consideration that there's, you know, this license agreement only covers the, this matter, you know, strictly from a county right-of-way perspective. There's some other implications in approving this license from a land use permitting perspective. And I'll let CDD staff speak to that. Yeah, so with that, I think I'd have things over to Nick right now.
Yes, Nick.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just get clear. So we had basically direct negotiations with a party asking us for this agreement as a board, which is wonderful that we were able to do that for the three of us because there was communication individually on this. So that was a, you know, kind of hearing from the person looking for this license agreement. Now we have kind of a more mature license agreement possibly with the good public input or the, you know, private input we had from that one, the developer. So I'm just trying to get clear on what we might do today. As in, this could possibly be, if you're asking for a license agreement, this is what the county officially, the Board of Commissioners agrees to either accept it or don't accept it. I'm just trying to make sure we're, we know where we're at and where we're going here.
I believe there are five different provisions that the direction of our Road Department has one position and the applicant has another. So I'm wondering legally, do we address each item individually? Or do we amend what we want to amend? Is legal? What do you, Dave Doyle, are you available?
Hey Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yeah, barely.
I've been having trouble with my Zoom. I'm sorry.
You have. You must be tired. Maybe you need a new Zoom.
You can always come down.
I've been working on it yesterday. So we're hoping it'll, it'll fix itself. But you know, the board can do what it chooses to do at this point. Staff has put the license agreement together with the conditions and terms that it believes are appropriate and reasonable. The other party is, in essence, asked that this come to the board level for your review and consideration on those terms. And as Cody indicated, staff provided some information last week. I understand Nick and Todd may be in the room down there right now and could provide some additional information for the board as well. But yeah, it's, the ball's sort of in your court in terms of whether you want to direct changes along the lines of what Mr. Kine has requested, or if you are comfortable having the license agreement remain as proposed by staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Nick, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Chair Adair and Commissioners. Nick Lealack, Deschutes County Community Development Director, and Todd Cleveland, Environmental Soils Supervisor here. I think it's helpful for Todd to just summarize what the DEQ rules are for connections to sewer systems that are legally and physically available. So if Todd can summarize that, I just have a couple of follow-up questions just so that we, so everybody's informed of what the board may be considering. Thank you.
Hi, Nick.
Oh, this is Todd Cleveland. So when a sewer becomes available, it's defined in DEQ rule that we can't issue a septic permit if sewer is both physically and legally available. Physical availability means within 300 feet. That's been the code forever. So when this extension comes across the highway and these stub outs are placed in the right-of-way, we looked at a map and it's going to put over 100 properties within 300 feet. Typically, the next part of that is the legal availability. And in our, in the state rule, it's very broad, the way it's defined. It says legal availability, a sewerage system is deemed legally available if the system is not under a DEQ connection permit moratorium and the sewer system owner is willing or obligated to provide sewer service. So from my understanding, they would be, they would be willing to serve anyone that can connect to it or wants to pay the fee to connect to it. And last week, we talked about, you know, I think he said 10 to 12 EDUs or that's equivalent dwelling units could connect to this system. Typically, we're in a planned development. There may be a defined border or service area that is, that is put into place. So like places like in Terrebonne, like Angus Acres, their homeowners association and their defined service area was all part of their homeowners association. And it was defined, including in the land use decision and in the DEQ permit, who was to be served by that community system. So we have that available to us. When this comes up now, we have 10 to 12 capacity for 10 to 12 homes. Anyone that may need a septic permit within 300 feet, as long as they're willing to serve them, we may not be able to issue a septic permit without some criteria that we would, we would be able to apply. So, you know, I don't know what that may be. There may need to be a discussion about that, how to define that. Typically, it's done, you know, this is a little bit of a unique private sewer system. So that's an issue we wanted to make sure you're aware of.
So one question, not be able to issue a septic permit on, so there's undeveloped parcels and there's developed parcels with an existing system. So you're referring to both of those scenarios?
Both of those scenarios. So we could do, you know, we do authorization notices where someone may be proposing a modification to a residence or a use. As long as we wouldn't have to issue a minor repair or minor alteration or a new construction permit, there, we could authorize that use. However, when we have to issue a permit, these, these items come into place. That could be a tank, you know, a tank replacement permit.
So there could be a property owner within 300 feet that is just walking in saying, I'd like to.
Change out my tank.
Yeah, change out a metal tank to a concrete tank is one of the scenarios. And that's, it's not, there's no path for that because you're within 300 feet and you're going to be required to connect. So what if the system doesn't have the capacity, all the EDUs?
So if it doesn't have capacity, they, they can't serve them essentially by permit from DEQ. They would be under a restriction. They couldn't serve anyone else. So we would be, they wouldn't be available, wouldn't be legally available to the, to the property owner.
So then they could get the permit for?
So knowing those, we have to work really in close coordination with, you know, the system owner and operator and DEQ in that circumstance.
So I'm just, so there's possibly that scenario where all EDUs are spoken for. I want to change my tank. The system was within 300 feet, but there's no capacity. Will they be able to get a permit for that tank?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so.
But it would, it creates complicating factors for a property owner.
Yeah.
Whether it's available, whether it's not available, when is it not available? How much capacity is available?
So, you know, what Todd's talking about really is kind of an overview of this new complicating factor. And this is what happened in my neighborhood in all of Southeast Bend was if, if they put in the sewers, they started the project, there was a worry that any house that was in 300 feet, which, you know, I'm not the first, but there's people that are, would be response, they couldn't get an approval by county for their septic.
Capacity.
They would have to literally run the line for 300 feet. And it was cost, I mean, this was a big contentious issue in Southeast Bend. Because, and then we found out that really we've been letting people fix it, which is good because 300 feet of sewer was $75,000 or $100,000 to do. But the other part is that, so you're saying, you're kind of bringing up the fact that this is going to complicate people that do, if this comes across the highway, or maybe it is, is it already across the highway?
Hasn't been.
Okay. But its plan is to come across, then it opens up this, this thing for other people. The other side of it is allows people to hook up to it that are close, who might want to hook up to it. So that's the other, and I haven't had any citizen input about whether people want this available or not. I haven't, I know that there have some, been some people that have spoken out, but I haven't, we haven't had a hearing or anything about it. But I guess that's up to them.
We did have our workshop on it. So Nick.
You mean the meeting we had?
Yes.
Yeah, but that, but, yeah.
I have quite a few emails, but mostly they're from Mr. Klein and then his attorney.
Yeah, but I mean, the people that would be.
Right.
What happened in Southeast Bend is that the neighborhoods were concerned that if, once it started, you couldn't, you know, impose costs on people.
So, so to tie into what you're talking about with the southeast septic to sewer issue in Southeast Bend, one of the ways that the city of Bend has addressed that in coordination with us so that we kind of can, can work with them, is that they created codes that they adopted that determine the legal availability within the city. But see, that's where you have an entity that's responsible. So in this case, it's a private entity. So it's a little bit different circumstance.
Would the county have to develop those kind of rules then for a non-incorporated area or?
Necessarily.
Okay.
So Commissioners, what you have in your packet is you have this map of the, of the areas where it's proposed. This is the information that Todd and I have right now. So for us, when we talk about there's 100 properties within these yellow, within 300 feet of these yellow lines, and there's 10 to 12 EDU capacity or maybe more, without a boundary, we don't know, or Todd doesn't know when he's going to evaluate a septic system repair, which of these properties would be required to connect and which not, absent a district. So that's, that's one question. Another question we have is how many of the people that might be impacted know that they might be impacted. And there's both, there could be costs, but there's also real benefits. And then the last question just gets to Commissioner Henderson's question is, would this process benefit by some community outreach or some opportunity for public input? Just, just so the people understand if they are in the boundary or not and what, what the triggers might be to connect to the sewer system. So we're just, we just want to make sure that the board's making an informed decision and that Todd can provide the correct information to property owners when septic systems are requiring repairs or replacements.
But your points really go to whether we should issue a license agreement, period, rather than the issue of whether, but the terms are, right? Is that, am I really understanding that right? Are you, are you making, because we, I think what Commissioner Adair said was right, that what it'd come down to with us was really the five specific provisions. That's not really, you're not really testing finding on the, or talking about that.
They're taking it beyond.
Our, our comments are if, if the, if the license is agreed and the, and the lines are installed, what does that then mean for, for Todd's work in, in Todd's, the environmental soils work in Tumalo when a system needs to be repaired or replaced to those individual property owners? There, so that's just the next step. If the license agreement is approved, we just want to make sure that people are informed and know.
And there's a possibility that we could work something out with the system owner about a process about when they're, when they're willing or obligated to serve someone so that we know that they've got an agreement with someone, et cetera. It's just a matter of we wanted to make sure everybody knew this, that you knew this, so that you, you didn't get suddenly someone calling you upset because I won't issue a septic permit.
So you haven't had any discussions yet with the owner of this, or, well, the owners, the homeowners association, with Mr. Kine about what his or the association's expectations are for hookups? I mean, if, because he's talking, he talked about, like you said, going across the road would immediately allow 10 or 12 EDUs. But he also talked about expanding the system so he could really do the rest of the city and, or the community. And I would think there'd be a lot of support for this in that community because of the challenge that they're, but I don't know. There's.
Well, just remember, the Mexican restaurant has been sitting there empty for a couple years. I believe the comments a couple of years ago were that it was going to cost $300,000 to upgrade their septic system. So that property owner might be really looking for something, you know, this kind of an opportunity if it could have the capacity to serve a restaurant, which I believe has a bigger capacity, a need.
It may not have that capacity at this point.
Right.
But they could potentially do, you know, design something that would, that would work, modify the system, you know, increase the capacity, do something like that. But yeah, that, that restaurant, you know, produced very high-strength wastewater and they, to serve it, was going to cost, you know, in Tumalo was going to be very expensive. This system's located up out of the basin. So that helps with getting it away from the river, for example.
You know, a little caveat about this is I would assume that the soil's deeper in Tumalo than it is in Southeast Bend. Is that?
Yes. So it's, it's very, it's, it's plenty, there's plenty of soil. Soil, the soil, the existence of soil's not a problem. The problem is that it's basically old river, it's just like, it's riverbed. So it's, and it's right by the river. So it's highly permeable. It's got cobbles in it. I mean, you know, the size of a basketball.
But the, the point of that really for me is that that means septic systems are more difficult, but it would mean a sewer system would be much less expensive than Southeast Bend. I mean, Southeast Bend, you're, you're basically cracking through rock and it was very deep. And so the objection of residents would be probably less be, in terms of the cost that it would take to run these lines.
It would be very feasible to.
Yeah, very cost-effective probably. Because it's also a pumps, the one, we were talking about Southeast had to, wasn't on a pump station or anything. It was all, so it had to be, meet the downhill, whatever you call it, the incline. So, okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, they had to hammer a lot of rock to get those.
Yeah, yeah. We heard it, yep.
But then you have to think about how long the Tumalo Stick House was for sale. It was, I believe, a couple of years where they were really looking for a new ownership. So, you know, he definitely has come in and made a positive difference for their community.
And that's what I'm saying actually, is it's easier, this will be less of a burden. If there is a burden, it's less of a burden than, than other places because of the soil. You can put these trenches in and put the pipe in a lot easier. So it's.
Without dynamiting.
Right, right. So, and, and that would be a reason people might really like it. I mean, I, when I originally heard this, and I think that's what Mr. Kine has said, is that he's doing this in a way to improve the whole community as well. So.
Well, my thought now is to look at the agreement itself, figure out what would be acceptable from the county's point of view today, send it to the applicant and see if it's acceptable. And then, and then, because we haven't signed it yet. And then, you know, having a discussion with DEQ and possibly a community meeting of some sort, or at least maybe a notification to affected properties or something, you know. So my point is there's another step after, after this negotiation. Because it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for parcels that have been platted for, what, 150 years or whatever. I mean, it was before Deschutes County way back. And, you know, it'd be a heck of a community discussion.
I like that. I like your idea.
So that means figuring out this agreement, yeah.
Make one point. Also in this, I think, you know, that many of the property owner frustration or anger with the process in Bend had to do with the cost of connection. And there was much discussion, as, as you know, about different ways that that could possibly be financed. So if there was a means for the association to consider, you know, under the scenario that, you know, someone with a repair permit that's 299 feet from the sewer line might be able to work with the sewer provider to assist, you know, the situation where they can, you know, future connections can help offset that, that pioneer, that first connection up front, whether through the direct assistance of the association or through some kind of a trust arrangement where the original connector is repaid over time. Just those kinds of things where if there was some consideration for those possibilities, it may address much of the potential community frustration with being put in a situation of having to connect for, you know, a relatively minor permit.
Todd, I know there's a large system at the, the Shell Station and store that's standalone, quite an investment. I did speak to the owner and he said he doesn't want to have anything to do with this because of the investment he put in. What does that scenario look like? So that's kind of a commercial system.
So as long as they don't have a major modification that's required, they would be an existing system. They would not have to do anything to connect or anything like that. They could monitor, they could operate that system as is, as long as it's functioning. It doesn't need a major alteration, repair, things like that. The other component is that legal availability component. If they don't want to sign an agreement or if there's a requirement for them to sign an agreement with the homeowners association, which I don't know, you know, those are questions that we have. But they, they may be able to stay on their onsite system.
Do they have a, yeah, invested?
It's under a DEQ permit as well. We have a fairly significant system that we've permitted at the Byte, the food truck lot. They have a complex combination of treatment systems there that are still under county permit, that I worked closely with, an engineer and DEQ locally to get that permitted. And I don't think they're going to want to, they've invested a significant amount of money into that. So I don't think they're going to want to connect either. So as long as they're not going through something that triggers a requirement, like a repair, then they don't have to connect. Or we could issue, you know, we don't have to issue a permit. So we don't have to come across that question.
Good. So that, yeah, so the current investments that are, that are appropriate, as in if they're undersized and struggling today, then they're going to need a, a different system. That would trigger the discussion. But if they're sized appropriately for the amount of activity and flow, they can just keep them maintained and move on.
Yes, yeah. When they change uses or need to modify or they have a failure.
Yep, okay.
But I think what we're looking at is actually the license required from our Road Department. They want to go under Highway 20. And they want a performance bond. It seems like we could still make that decision today if, to go through the five different changes that we have a disagreement on. So, you know, I don't know. If you're saying.
I think that's what Commissioner DeBon was saying, is why don't we go through those five, see where we are. And then we're, we still have the second discussion of.
Hearing from the community.
Of the overall license issue and how's that fit in with DEQ and our county.
And we're having a pub, and I've, I've been through some Tumalo community discussions in the past. So we're having a public meeting, Board of Commissioners, letting the world know. But there'll be a point where it resonates and everybody's starting to tell everybody, hey, did you hear about this? And so we need to be ready for that. But that's not now. That's coming.
Well, yeah, that'd be, when we, that's right. That's right. We get done today what we can.
Yep.
And then see about the next step or.
Okay. Well, the first one, the first item then is item 7A for performance bond. The Road Department is asking for a performance bond such that work is authorized within the right-of-way, is completed as proposed, and the county should not be left with any expenses associated with repair or restoration of the right-of-way should things not go as planned. The association is opposed to that? Do you want to take each item individually or do you want to take it all together?
So the request was to remove the cost of pipe, which I think is specifically in here. But I think it still might read a little different than I would expect. So less the cost of pipe fittings and valves. So, and Cody or Dave or Adam can help with this. My thought is, are we trying to, we're trying to preserve a transportation system, which means a paved surface and the, the shoulders. So if there was a failure, I mean, what would be the scenario? If there was a failure of the system and some, you know, water's flowing or effluent's flowing, we want to cap it and stop it? Or would we want to repair the pipe so then we get, you know, the county, repair the pipe so the system is. get, you know, the county, repair the pipe so the system is functioning? As in, would we step into the responsibility of repairing a system, or just capping it and, you know, standing by and repairing the road and the cost of repairing the road?
Cody, do you want to step in here for the performance?
Yeah, I'm here.
Please.
So this, this performance bond would just cover the, the construction phase of the project. This wouldn't be under a scenario where the system was active. This, this just has to do with, if the association was to start construction on this, they go in there and have open trenches, and then for some reason, things don't go as planned, this performance bond, much like when we require performance bonds from developers doing other public improvements, when we require performance bonds for our own contractors working on our own projects, this, this performance bond provides that surety instrument that, that, gives us the financial backing to go in there and, and in this case, just undo whatever's been done. So, so if we have open trenches, it allows us to fill those trenches. So, as we discussed at the meeting last week, that the issue concerning the, the cost for pipes, fittings, valves, those kind of components, we, we had already, kind of, between road department, legal counsel, and, and the proposed licensee, we had already come to an understanding on that, that that's.
So is this the understanding? Is this the understanding then? This reflects the agreement or understanding between the two parties?
Um, in, well, in, in the roads department, from the road department's perspective, it does. I mean, based on what, what Mr. Kine stated at the meeting last week, maybe not, but. So, yeah, we did, we did clarify in, in the current inclusion of the agreement that, that performance bond was, was for the estimated cost of construction, a hundred and twenty percent of the estimated cost of construction, less the cost for, for pipes, fittings, and valves.
So, so your answer to my question is that, I guess, that the applicant, or the less licensee has not approved this language yet, or is, is there still objections to part of it, or?
Um, I, I think that's going to be a question for the, the proposed licensee here. I mean, I.
But nobody went to him and asked?
We, we thought we were in agreement on this, this provision back in March, and now we're not for some reason.
Mr. Kine's negotiating with us directly, so we're referring to the last time we met at this point, so it wouldn't be appropriate.
Well, I thought this was new language, though, since the last time we met.
No, it's the same.
Oh, okay.
So, I would propose, is there, is there a different way to word this? As in, why do we have to refer to underground facilities? As in, a road is on top of the ground, so it could be written as such that, you know, ground made flat and pavement restored, instead of anything to do with underground facilities, because.
So you're like.
I mean, if it's an open trench, we're going to make it flat.
Prior to the, you know, construction or the digging out for underground facilities, is that what you're saying, or something like that?
Well, so this, they furnish the road department with an instrument in the amount of a hundred and twenty percent of the cost of construction of the underground facilities. And I think it could say something like, you know, a hundred and twenty percent of repairing to existing condition, and not even refer to underground facilities.
Yeah, so I, I like.
Because if we're not in the sewer business.
Yes, Adam?
Uh, I think it comes down to, and the, the conversations that were occurring back in March is, what is the hundred and twenty percent of the estimated cost for construction of the underground facilities? I think we could pretty easily address the concern by clarifying that the estimated cost for construction does not include the cost of pipes, fittings, and valves, or other materials. And as Cody noted, we thought that this provision, we thought we had an agreement on this provision. We were surprised that we didn't have agreement on this provision, but I think it's pretty simple to add in there that the estimated cost does not include the cost of the pipes and the fittings and the valves, et cetera, and I think that would resolve the issue pretty simply.
Well, and, and the version, the version of the agreement that's before you today, that's exactly what it states.
Yeah, it says.
Reading it.
Less the cost of, yeah.
Amount equal to a hundred and twenty percent of the estimated cost for construction of the underground facilities, less the cost of pipe fittings and valves.
So here's my concern, is that?
We're referring to underground facilities because that's, that would just, that's a good, you know, kind of, put it in, in, in shorter terms, what, what we identified the facilities as throughout the agreement. That's, that's the best way we had to capture those, those construction costs. You know, otherwise, we're, we're putting it on either the licensee or potentially the road department to come up with some theoretical cost for what it would take to backfill all, all the trenches that are going to be required for, for the facilities within the right-of-way, what the cost would be for repairing the roads. Most of those costs are already, well, all of those costs are essentially already built into, to this estimate, engineer's estimate that we're asking for in the agreement, so this, this seemed like the, the simplest way to put this. Yeah, but that, that said, certainly, if, if there's some other suggestion for how to word that, you know, or if the board is requesting different wording there, we can, we can put that in there.
So.
Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, thanks. So what I think is fair is that we create a performance bond to repair the road, get it back to flat, like Commissioner DeBonne was saying at, at some point. What I'm worried about is the description being encompassing enough as it is, because another part of construction of underground facilities might be inspections. It might be safety things you have to do because you've dug a deep trench. It might be all sorts of things. The contract, in other words, to do this work might be two million, but, but when you just reduce it just to pipes, fittings, and valves, that's just hardware, you know, that's the, but there's all this other stuff that may be related to that, would be part of the construction cost. And so I think, I want to stop at the point where we're not making them bond all of that stuff, so, but that would be a, a matter of discussion with the, the licensee, because I don't really know what's involved in putting this in. But my goal is, my concern is, I don't want to make it look like we're in the business at the county at this point, unless we make a conscious decision to be where we're responsible for this, this sewer system, and it, because I'm reminded of what happened out at Mountain High, when the city condemned the water system and ended up paying sixteen million dollars for that, and I don't, so I don't, I want to make it clear that we're just saying that if they don't finish, which is where a performance bond comes through, we're able to just restore it to road condition. We're not, and the bond should be based on restoring to the road condition, or, and, and being careful to make sure we cover that. So you really have to get somebody that knows what the costs of, are of a contract of this. It's not, there's way more cost than equipment, that's the easy part, but it's all the other stuff that, how many people are involved in the construction costs of a, of a utility system that aren't, have nothing to do with, you know, returning this to nor, or to previous, is what, which is what I think our goal is, is that?
So with that scenario, maybe it could read as simple as, instead of a hundred and twenty percent of the estimated cost, it's sixty percent of the estimated cost, because we're not finishing a sewer system, we are making the road flat again. So, you know, that may be very acceptable by the applicant, and it makes sense from the county's point of view, because if it's an open trench and a partially, you know, chewed up, a blacktop, we're just getting it back to flat.
Again, I, I have no idea what.
But, yeah, that's just a seat of the pants way to.
I'm not an agent or experts that's can say, here's what a project like this costs, this is the part, it's just, I'm saying.
But the concept that.
Lawyers need to work on, or something like.
It could be less than, instead of more than. You know, a hundred and twenty percent sounds like a buffer, but maybe it's half of that is, is the appropriate number for the.
Yeah. I, I don't know that, but I, that's the concept, exactly.
One, one suggestion, well, and first, just let me say, yeah, there's certainly no intent with requiring the performance bond that the county would, would actually take over operations or construction of the system. I mean, I, this is akin to, you know, when we have, for example, private development in a destination resort, when they enter into an improvement agreement with the county that allows them to plat their development ahead of building the improvements. County enters into an improvement agreement with them, we require a performance bond. You know, I guess nuance there is, in that case, that the intent would be that the county would theoretically finish that project, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the county is going to take over maintenance and operations of that infrastructure. So what I was going to suggest, though, I mean, we, we could easily change this to instead ask that the, the applicant provide us with an engineer's estimate of what it would cost to restore the roadway facilities, you know, backfilling the entire length of the trenches within the right-of-way, reconstruction of, of the road and all the, the crossings, and we could work it like that.
Yeah, I mean, you can do that, you can have the licensee do it, but you ought to do it yourself, too, because in the end of the day, he's not going to be the one doing it, we would be. And so I guess that, that's what I'm saying, is this would take in informed people sitting down and saying, you know, this is a realistic, I mean, you guys do road work, you, you, you should have ability to estimate it, too, but I, I just, that's my, it takes informed people. It's not, this is a provision, I don't think we should help, we, we can help direct the writing of it, but we can't make the call on what's a fair amount. If there's agreement between us that we, we do want to limit it to just the re.
Yeah.
Putting it back to where it was, if there was a system fail, or, you know, that.
If the project fell apart.
If the project fall.
And there's a lot of variables, you know, if it's a centerline trench, or if it's a, you know, edge of the road trench is going to be very different, if there's a, you know, paved surface being affected or not.
So Cody, do we know where they're going to put the trench?
Uh, so we, we have reviewed a draft set of their plans for this, this first phase, and, and just, just to, you know, clarify one thing, too, just so the board is aware, you know, we're not talking about licensing all the roads within Tumalo, we're just talking about a few very specific streets, specifically as far as the expansion of the system, we're talking about Seventh Street between Highway twenty and Wharton Road, and then Wharton Road between Seventh Street and Fourth Street. So we're not, we're not talking about Cook Avenue, at least not yet. But, so, so with that in mind, yeah, we, we have a, a set of the engineer's plan, I mean, if that's what the board's instructing road department to do, we can, we can put a cost to that and make the, the performance bond requiring for that amount, if that's what the board's asking us to do.
So exactly what we're seeing in yellow on our page, our packet page fifty-eight then, is what you're talking about?
Yeah, and so on, on that map, essentially, everything, everything east and or north of Wood Avenue, it, it would be the expansion. The stuff on Wood Avenue and, and everything west of that is already existing.
Yeah, part of it's already there.
Right. So we're going under the highway, and then we're going down Seventh and taking a left and going down Wharton, according to.
Well, yeah, I, I take a little bit of that, that, actually, there's, so there's a new connection to their existing system at the, near the intersection of Strickler and Bailey Roads.
Okay.
Yep. Is that, oh, I mean, could they change, could that be changed at some point, or is it in locked in at that plan?
Um, I guess I don't completely understand the question. I mean, I think, I think the, the, the association here has intents for expanding the system potentially beyond what's shown right now. As far as changing the alignments, I, I, I suppose it's possible, but if that were the case, that the applicant would have to, you know, provide the road department with a new set of plans, we'd have to go through that plan review all over again, that, so that's why we didn't, you know, we didn't want to have those kind of specifics in this license agreements. Those are the kind of specifics we'd work out in the plan review.
Well, time is something that I know the person behind the plan has been really upset with, saying that the county's taken way too long, so I do believe that.
Well, and I guess, I understand that we're.
Time is money.
We've been asked to kind of negotiate this, I guess, directly, but this is a detail that, I mean, is, it doesn't seem like it's the thing that we should be trying to figure out at a meeting here, that's why I was thinking that attorney, you know, that either legal counsel or the road department's saying, well, let's, what does that really mean? What, what is, you know, why is, what is one twenty percent of something like this? And what is the stuff that's not related to the? I just bring it up because I would be thinking about that if I was said, well, we'll leave out pipes, fittings, and valves, that's the hardware, but I'd be thinking about all the other costs related that were making the performance bond reflect that really wouldn't be related to fixing the road. So I'm just, and I'm, that may not be what the licensee is concerned with, but we don't know without asking. I mean, that, but that's what I would think about if I was, I mean, because I am in favor of a performance bond, just like other projects. I guess that's what I'm saying. I am, I want to make sure the amount's fair.
And it's been said, I mean, and I think staff, you know, truly tried to get, get this landed months ago, so, I mean, this, this did go back and forth in a very businesslike fashion, and these are just the sticking points.
Yeah.
Well, the association is opposed to a performance bond, I'm for a perfor, I, I think you could do without one.
Yeah, so we all.
Okay, so we're all for the performance bond. You need to work on the language then?
So, so if I'm understanding, board, we will, we will go back and talk to the, the proposed licensee here and propose some new language there that, that basically, the performance bond, the, the estimated cost that that performance bond will be based on is the estimated cost for repair and restoration of the entire quantity of, of trench and, and road surfacing. It's not, not necessarily the, based on their engineer's estimate for their, their actual project. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yep. And I would support it, as in, if they're going to do phase one down one road and phase two down the other road, you know, it could be just the, covering the cost of a phase, too, you know, so it doesn't have to be two-phase cost total, it could be one phase at a time.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and certainly, I, I, we didn't get any indication from the, the proposed licensee here that, you know, what, what they sent us a set of plans for the new connection at Strickler, running that down Bailey, running it down Seventh and up Wharton. I mean, we didn't, we didn't get any indication from them that they were planning on phasing that. Again, we, our understanding is that at some point, the, the proposed licensee would like to expand on this, in which case we would be amending this agreement to include a, a new map and, and have everything else abide by the, the same terms of the agreement that, that'll already be in place, possibly extending the date. But, yeah, when we start talking about phases, I mean, I think from the, the proposed licensee's standpoint here, I think this is actually phase three of their, their project. Phase one was when they installed it for the, the residential development there. Phase two, I think, was when they hooked up Tumalo Junction, and now this is phase three for them.
But I'm referring to how much open and disturbed, you know, open trench and disturbed road there would be at a time. So I would support the fact that if it's, you know, and this would be an engineering-type estimate, but if it's a hundred yards at a time, it doesn't have to be the total, the bond coverage doesn't need to be the total length of the project, it could just be possibly, you know, X disturbed area for a construction phase. And this isn't my world, this is your world, but I'm just saying.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't, we can discuss that with the proposed licensee a little bit. That's, that's starting to really complicate things, especially if they're actually getting a surety instrument. That's only going to, you know, there's, there's kind of two scenarios there in that case. One, they're going to have to get multiple surety instruments, or two, they're going to, you know, they're going to be required to essentially do it in phases, so, you know, they only want to bond up to this amount, and we can only build this much at a time, this much.
Yep, and I knew, as I was saying it, that that's more complicated, but I was just trying to get the concept of through that, you know, maybe there's a bond for an amount, which refers to the fact that not everything is done at once. But, yeah, if that doesn't make sense, I don't run with it, I was just throwing out ideas.
I, I think the instructions are clear, so.
Okay, good.
Okay, so then we come to item seven C. They ask for their permits to be issued within five business days, and you're saying that that is going to jump them up to the front of the line every time, but.
Uh, yeah, so, you know, and we discussed this at our meeting last week, I mean, so, you know, when we're talking about these right-of-way activity permits, this, this is a, applicants apply for these online, typically it's their contractor who applies for them, and, and our turnaround for these is usually relatively quick. Usually, we're turning them around within two business days. So, however, write, writing a provision like this in the agreement is effectively, yeah, in, in the event that, you know, it's, it's basically requiring us to jump them to the front of the line every time the association applies for a permit. So this isn't just their permit for the initial construction, this is a permit anytime they have to go out there and repair something, or put in a new service connection, those kind of things. So, yeah, so that, that's effectively, a provision like this would, would in essence jump them to the front of the line in our permit queue every time, and.
So is it, I, I mean, I was trying to think, how do we, because what they're doing is actually excellent for that community, and I realize that we're doing a lot of things, we have a lot of standards, which I believe we need to uphold, but what would ten days do? do if we promised them that within 10 days? Is that, would that be uncomfortable? I mean, is that, is this the bad precedent, is what my question, Nick? What do you think? Is it a bad precedent?
Commissioners, I would need to defer to the Road Department on-
Okay.
-their process.
From the Road Department's perspective, this is a bad precedent. This, this is, again, this is giving them priority over any other utility, you know, public utilities in the county. I mean, we, we're, we're processing multiple right-of-way activity permits on a daily basis here. So, yeah, it's, it's a bad precedent from our perspective.
Thank you for being so honest, Cody.
We can rely on our very businesslike and proud atmosphere and response to, you know, the community's needs. This is the business of the people, and we take it very seriously. So, I mean, it's a request, but we shouldn't put it in an agreement like this.
Commissioner Henderson, did you want to say anything about Item 7C?
So, uh, do we have other projects like this that have multiple steps? Is that typical or atypical? Because it seems like what the licensee might be saying is, we're going to have to do a lot of these, and we don't want, I guess they can't do them all at once, so they have to wait each time. And is that typical with other projects, that there's multiple permits required?
Uh, yeah, yeah. So, so maybe just to give the board a little bit more understanding of our right-of-way activity permitting process. So pursuant to our code, and also state law, we require a permit anytime, effectively anytime anyone's doing anything in our right-of-way other than driving, walking, riding their horse, riding their bike, those kind of things. So if somebody's setting up traffic control on our right-of-way for one reason or another, the, the lion's share of these permits that we issue are to utilities who are going out to either install, install or replace their utilities, or repair their utilities. Again, we issue, on average, somewhere around seven of these permits every day.
Seventy?
We require a permit for every road that's touched. So, for example, yeah, Ben Broadband-
Seven or seventy? You do seven or seventy of these a day?
Seven a day. That we, just, and that's just permits we issue. So, so we have, you know, a large, a large queue of active permits that our inspector has to go out and check on a daily or weekly basis, as these projects are in the construction. But, yeah, the question about in regards to getting permits for, for, you know, numerous permits for a single project, I mean, yeah, that, that happens all the time. I mean, a, a good example right now, Ben Broadband's doing some, some, some major expansion of their facility. So every road they're touching with that, they're getting a new permit. The permit process is, as far as applying for the permit, is real easy. It's a, it's an application on our website. In order to apply for the permit, the, it's, you have to have a contractor on board who has acceptable insurance on file with the Road Department. And the online application only takes about three minutes to fill out, get sent, and then it automatically gets emailed to Road Department staff. And again, typically, our turnaround time is within two business days. But, but it's not a, it's a, it's a relatively painless process, and it happens real quick.
I know, but looking at it from their side, it does, time just costs mon-, is money. So, you know, I'm sure that two business days is actually excellent, but still, it's money. So what about Item 9B, the insurance? Our county risk management is saying 2 million per occurrence and 4 million for general aggregate, and they're saying 1 million per occurrence and 2 million per general. So risk has said, we really need to stick with the two and the four. Feedback on that one?
So I, you know, I heard from Larry, you know, during our session, he said, this is the cost of doing business, going to be handed to the ratepayers. It's, you know, it's that thing that, if he can lower it, it'll be valuable to the customers or the participants. But I don't have a way to calculate the appropriate amount.
I think, given the scope of it and the fact that you're opening up the ground, and I don't know how deep things are, I, in other kinds of claims, 1 million, 2 million isn't-
This is for the rest of time.
Yeah, so that, well, they only have to, no, I think it's during construction.
Yes.
It's not-
Oh, well, yeah, let's get clear on that. So I was thinking-
No, it probably ends, it's a one-year policy, and then you, you can re-up it, but it's not a forever thing.
So this license is going to have an end?
Um, no, the license wouldn't have an end. This is a perpetual license. So the insurance requirement is a perpetual requirement.
Because, yeah, because the system will be in place, operating, or not operating, for the rest of time. So this is a perpetual license. So this is, this will go in and stay in. So then that number is relative to the, you know, inflation of the world, and if it's our right number, it'll just stay that number?
I guess it'd be my question. Is it $1,000 a year, or 10,000, or how much is it for a policy like this? Anybody know?
Do we have any idea?
I don't know off the top of my head.
The price difference?
Yeah, it depends on, you know, a lot of different factors. But again, this, this isn't, this is, the insurance requirement in general is certainly something that the Road, you know, we, we have to have in here. As far as the level, the amounts of that insurance, I mean, we, we're, we, Road Department are completely deferring to risk and legal counsel for that.
So I guess my question is, so when, when PP&L or Central Electric puts in a utility line, and they've dug the trench, they put it in, and then buried it, do they keep insurance on that utility line forever?
Uh, all, all the utilities within our right-of-way keep, perpetually keep general liability insurance, and they send us an updated copy of that certificate every year. You mentioned PP&L, yeah, we have, every year, we have a certificate from PP&L. They carry much, much higher insurance than this.
So this really isn't about the building of it. This isn't insurance for building of it. And, and, see, in building houses, you have course of construction insurance, which is, just covers while you're building it, and then you can insure your house if you're their owner. That you're saying this is, this is just for being the owner of this system. We're requiring them, if they're in our license, right, you know, under this license, in our right-of-way, we're requiring them to have, and you've said this sewer system will, this is a reasonable amount. Yeah, I have no idea what the-
Yeah, and so again, you know, the, the proposed licensee has already demonstrated to us that they have, that they have a 1 million, 2 million dollar policy that, that they have to carry perpetually. And, and my understanding is that, that's a requirement that, that, based on DEQ regulations. So, you know, again, as far as these amounts that we're requiring, that we're asking for here, I defer to risk and legal.
Okay, and risk just showed up.
Get him a hot seat. So, so then one of the questions would be, what is a scenario that this would be triggered, as in, what are we covering for?
With the insurance requirement?
Thank you very much for joining us, yep.
Sure. It would be if, if somebody was injured, based on the work done by the contractor.
We're talking about perpetual insurance. This is for the rest of time.
Or if, I guess if there was a, a failure of the system and damaged our road, that would also be another scenario.
Does it also protect the people that hook up with it?
Or facilities, another way to look at it, facilities that are within our right-of-way damaging other people's property.
And that's the big issue, is, you know, you, it breaks and, you know, and floods five houses, and there's also, so that's, I guess that's really needs to be clarified, is what's the scope of this coverage? Because 1 to 2 million isn't very, it might not be very much for a small thing, but for a big, I, I mean, I guess you guys need to assess that. I-
I mean, in, in general, with public works projects, that's why risk recommends the 2 and the 4 million. But really, if it's, I mean, it's a board decision, and if, if the board is comfortable with decreasing the insurance amounts, there's more risk to the county and the general taxpayers. I mean, it just, it just transfers-
Risk.
-that risk.
Well, see, this idea of a license came up from us, right? We're the ones that wanted to create a license rather than just permitting this as we went along. Isn't that right, Legal?
So this was this difference between, yeah, the original, the primary property owner, when it went down, just down, was it Wood Avenue or whatever, and now it's going across other-
By creating a license, we put ourselves at more risk because we've said, we've kind of endorsed this system. So if something goes wrong with this, that's what I'm worried about. So that's where I don't want to necessarily reduce it, if that's our exposure. I guess Legal, they really need to talk about what our exposure is. This is a big deal, and, yeah.
He, Commissioners, the intent of the license is to not expose the county to more risk. It's, uh, to, to reduce the risk. If we were not going through a license process, I think, um, there would still be sewer lines within the county road right-of-way. They could still cause issues to the county road right-of-way unless the traveling public, and that would then expose the county to more, not less, liability. I think a pretty obvious example, I mean, if the sewer pipe has a leak, the leak a road, a road portion of the roadway, it could be an issue with the traveling public, driving in cars. It could cause a car accident, it could cause any number of things.
So when you start talking about car accidents, 2 and 4 million is really pretty, it could be minor.
So are you saying the county, I'm asking you to, what is the county liable for? And are we liable to the person that has the car accident? Are we liable to the person that owns the house that's destroyed by the leak? Are we liable because of something we're doing here for all that stuff?
Uh, I think we're certainly trying to, whether or not we're ultimately liable is oftentimes less of a relevant issue. I can absolutely see somebody in those circumstances going after the county for having the sewer lines in the right-of-way in the first place. And we're trying to cover our risk in case something like that were to occur.
And the county has control of the right-of-way, and to the extent that the county is allowing folks by permit, license, or otherwise, access that right-of-way, we're going to be a target defendant if something occurs. And that's, that's the, the insurance requirement, you know, primary reason for that. As Adam indicated, ultimately, we might not be writing a check, but that won't stop us from being named as a defendant in it on the basis that we do control the right-of-way. But the pipe that allegedly broke that caused the accident was a pipe that we were aware was going in, that we licensed and/or permitted, and that they, we therefore have some level of oversight or responsibility to make sure it meets, you know, minimum standards and whatnot. And, and rather than have an inspector there during the course of this project, one way to ensure that is to rely on the engineer and the, and the contractor that's involved with putting it in, and also require the insurance and the indemnification. Speaking to those insurance limits, I could just suggest, if the board's inclined to go with the 1 and the 2, we could put in the language we, we have generally in a lot of other agreements, that would just say, you know, coverage sufficient to meet existing tort limits. Right now, the 1 and the 2 would be sufficient. In a few years, that would not be sufficient, as those tort limits ratchet up every, every year.
Do you happen to know, Eric, if there's a insurance policy up in Angus Acres, where they've done an independent system? Do they have a requirement? Because those will probably go on our right-aways also in the roads.
I, I don't know the answer. I don't know if Cody does. He might.
I'm not aware that we have, we, the Road Department, have an insurance certificate from them on record. One thing I would point out, in Angus Acres, also in Terrebonne Estates, as I recall, that there are some places where those sewers cross county roads, but for the most part, those facilities are, are actually located in a separate utility easement, where they run alongside the county road. So they're not actually, other than where they cross, cross our road, they're, the, the lateral connect, are not located in our county road right-of-way.
I like the idea of keeping with tort limits and starting with a lower number. That's a great system to be able to grow into.
Actually, I'm happy with the 2 and the 4. That was one of my shocks with the amount of insurance that we require people to have. I think that 2 and 4 is really, keeps everything safe. And when I look at the cost of my umbrella policy, between 1 million and 4 million, it's really pretty minor, I mean, relatively speaking, as long as you have that policy. So I'm not sure what the cost of this policy is, but it's like, I'd say for 1 to 4, it's like 700 versus 1600 or something from 1 to 4. But that's a different policy.
Yeah. I kind of agree with Commissioner Dare, I, although, I've got to say, I really don't have any idea what our exposure is. So, I mean, I'm not trying, counsel said, well, if you guys want to lower it, I don't know if I want to lower it or not. I don't know what our exposure is. I, I just want to make sure we're not on the hook for something, and I haven't even, I haven't thought about it any more than today, what, what this might mean, because I, you kind of have to think through it, like, where, you know, have there been other sewer damage claims anywhere in Oregon? Or what do they, you know, like we do with other cases in litigation, we're trying to say, what, what's our exposure? I, you know, and I don't know what this costs either. If, if the difference is, you know, huge, then we need to look at the fairness of it. If it's, you know, it's not that much, 2 to 4 is better. So I, I guess there's a lot that I don't know, but I mean, I started out similar to Commissioner Dare on the initial premise, that 1 and 2 wasn't very much, for what I could imagine is a possible, but.
So, and I do support getting to a, kind of a final version of this, to get back to Larry Kind, so then we know, you know, because that'll be his response to these things. So if you guys want to put 2 and 4 in there-
And if he wants to respond, maybe he can give some of the detail we've talked about that we don't know, or, and if Legal wants to say, well, yeah, there has been a, these cases here or there. I mean, I can, I can imagine things, but I don't know if any of them are likely. I don't know.
Okay, perhaps someone could let us know what the cost difference is. That would, you know, a dollar amount. It's really only $800 a year, or it's, it's really $3,000.
But those are quotes from different market players for different scenarios, so the number isn't just a standard number out of a book.
Well, yeah, but it's just like a car, car insurance. I know it's going to cost me between 200 and 500, not 2,000 and 5,000. I mean, that's all-
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm just looking for a ballpark here to know how big of a difference.
I would agree with that, yeah.
That's all I'm getting at, is I, yeah.
Okay, so Item 11, let's go on to that. That's the fourth item. A performance bond release, per request associated with Item 7A, for the association is opposed to this provision. So he doesn't want-
Sorry, just to reiterate this one. So this was actually in our initial discussions with the proposed licensee back in late February, late March. This was actually a provision they had asked for that would go along with the performance bond requirement. And it just kind of specified the terms of when the performance bond would actually be released, and they would not, they would no longer be under the obligation for that performance bond. Again, where we're at today, now the proposed licensee has asked for the performance bond requirement to go away. So with that requirement going, going away, they want this provision gone as well. So, Road Department's stance is, is if we're requiring the performance bond, it makes sense for our sake, but also for the sake of the licensee, to have this, the, the terms of the, the bond release in the agreement as well. I, I would think that if, if the performance bond requirement staying in, is staying in, that the licensee would also want this provision to stay.
Yeah, and I'm in favor of it staying in, if, you know, to do, it just seemed like it, you know, clarifies things.
They go together.
Yeah, they go together.
They do go together. So the last item is Item 15B, the termination. The licensee, per legal, general legal definition, license agreement is revocable by the county, da-da-da-da. A non-revocable license equates to an easement, and the county does not have easement authority for a public right-of-way. So the association is opposed to this provision. Adam, did you want to address that at all?
I think you summarized it succinctly. Other factors I would note is, the sheet of county code requires that the license be revocable in the circumstance.
Correct. Thank you.
Pretty black and white.
That's, okay. So.
So, it sounds to me like if we were to summarize this, the board is asking us to go back to the licensee, or proposed licensee, renegotiate the performance bond language to, to basically indicate that the, the performance bond would be 120% of the amount of the cost to effectively restore the, the road right-of-way, you know, backfilling trenches, restoring where it crosses the paved road. And the board would also like us to ask that the proposed licensee provide us with something demonstrating what the cost difference would be for them, to get an additional 1 million, 2 million dollars in insurance on top of the 1 million, 2, 2 million dollar policy that they've already demonstrated to us. Is that correct?
Yes.
But one caveat is, I, I'd prefer that not only you ask the licensee to provide this information, but do some independent research. this information, but do some independent research or thought yourselves about it, because it's good to have, you know, informed, if you're informed, if we're informed about that, it will help our decision.
Yeah. So, I mean, in terms of the, the, the performance bond amount, certainly that's, that will happen. As far as the insurance requirements, I, I don't know that we really have the ability to call an insurance company and ask them, you know, what, what's, what's it going to cost for you guys to insure the Tumalo Property Owners Association for 1 million, 2 million versus 2 million?
I bet, I bet Eric can do something though for us, Cody. I think we should, Eric just stepped out of the room, but I'm sure Eric could pull that up for us, at least to give us an approximation. You know, if it's, you know, $2,000 a year versus 50,000 or something, you know, who knows what, what the real difference is out in the market in today's world. And of course, it could change in a year, or it could change in six months, but, you know, just to give us an idea.
Nonetheless, we, we'll, we'll ask the, the proposed licensee to provide us that information as well.
Okay. Yeah, of course. I think that's excellent.
And commissioners, if I may, then going back to the next step. So once, hopefully we can resolve these remaining issues and have an agreement that's a work for both the county and for the applicant, then the next step, the intent is to hold off on signing that agreement until there's a public outreach, some, some kind of effort in working with the Tumalo community, and also some kind of efforts with the HOA, working with Todd Cleveland to identify what willing and able to serve is under these circumstances. Once those issues are resolved, then we bring the license back for the board's final signature. Do I have the process correct?
Well, and I would let, you know, that, at that point, we're partnering with Mr. Kind, you know. So, I mean, it's not us and them at that point. It's community conversation. So, I mean, generally, that scenario is correct, but as I say, at that point, it's not an adversarial relationship. If there's a license agreement agreed upon, it's a community conversation to make sure that affected property owners are informed of what's going on.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I agree that we hold off or not. I guess what I want to see what the result is of the process, but I, there may not be a consensus in the community. It may be, I don't know, that we do outreach, then, you know, it's not, it's different than, than other things we do. In fact, we don't have to do a hearing, but we do want to kind of find out where things are. And so I wouldn't make a conclusion yet about the outreach. Maybe just do what's right in front of us as a license agreement, then, is that what you guys think?
I think we should go ahead with a license agreement, getting the last points clarified. And, you know, I think that it will be interesting to talk more with the community. But this license agreement should be going forward. I believe, what is it? It's been since February? So we're almost to, yeah, that's nine months. It's taken a while, unfortunately.
So I'm hearing that you want to finalize the license agreement, execute the license agreement, and then have the public outreach with the Tumalo community to ensure that they're supportive of the sewer system?
But let's see if we can get through executing the license agreement, because that's still unknown.
So let's just.
Okay.
Are we good there?
From road department's perspective, I think we're, we understand.
Okay, Cody, when might, when might this come back then for, in front of us?
It, it's hard to say. I think that that's going to depend on the licensee here.
Okay. I mean, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, my suggestion is we, if you get results or something, let us know, you can also let us know individually where we are, and then we can decide whether we want to, because we, you know, we can be, we don't have to wait for the meeting to find that out.
Yeah, no, and I, I mean, I will say, I mean, we'll, we'll take this back to the licensee, and if they're, they're in agreement, I mean, we'll, we'll bring this right back to the board as soon as we can.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a lovely day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Thank you, Adam. Okay, so I hope Jessica Jacks is on. We're, we are, what is it, half an hour after our little agenda, calendar time? There's Jessica.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jessica.
I also have Tom Kuhn and Cheryl Smallman on standby if we need them during this dialogue. But I am here today to request your approval and review some information regarding reclassification of our suicide prevention coordinator from a community health specialist level two to a level three. And I'll start off by sharing with you that you are familiar with our suicide prevention coordinator, Whitney Schumacher. What you might not be familiar with is that she has recently resigned and is taking on another exciting role in her life and in our community. So we're fortunate to still have her around. But I wanted to let you know that prior to knowledge of her resignation, we were beginning to start a reclassification process. So with the knowledge that she is, her last day is actually November 3rd, with that knowledge, we really wanted to move this reclassification request up and forward so that we could post the position at the appropriate classification level. I'll describe a little bit more about that. This reclassification request more appropriately places the work scope. The demands on our department's suicide prevention program have grown significantly. The role of suicide prevention has been greatly influenced recently by legislative mandates in the past few years. The responsibility of upholding these mandates does fall to this position. And the level of responsibility and the increasing demand presented by these mandates is out of the scope of a level two. The mandates effectively require that the physician not only communicate with community partners and Oregon Health Authority regarding the suicide death of a person under the age of 24, but it also requires the physician to lead a coordinated response to ensure that appropriate safeguards are in place for that particular situation. The situations that come up are always complex. They require a high level of judgment that impacts how our local organizations respond. In addition, there are other duties that the department would like this position to take on that also match a classification of a level three. And they are expanding the role beyond suicide prevention to include mental health promotion, as well as assuring alignment across these two content areas, which include two other staff members and numerous community partners, as well as volunteers. It will also assist, we'd like to shift so that this physician is also assisting with, providing input on staff evaluations. This is consistent with a level three classification. So our assessment of these duties positions align with a level three, and Human Resources has reviewed our documentation and is also supportive of this assessment. Overall, the scope of the community health specialist level three includes more complex projects and program development, coordination, and management than a level two does. I'm going to shift gears a little bit to talk about our budget analysis. With this app, in your packet, starting on page 79, is a four-year budget analysis, starting from this fiscal year 21, and including our four primary revenue sources that support this program area. The budget analysis results in no personnel cost changes with a reclassification. And that is because our vacating staff, Whitney, who's currently at a step four in the level two category, is miserable with the potential incoming personnel that would be hired at most at step two of the community health specialist series level three. Those amounts, I hope that makes sense. So the personnel expenses will be equivalent or less to the current position. I want to make note of two important aspects of this budget analysis. First, you may notice that in order to maintain personnel costs, we have decreased materials and services over the four-year period of time in order to maintain personnel. The second aspect of this analysis that I'd like to point out is that one of our funding sources will sunset at the end of the fiscal year analysis, fiscal year 24, without OHA receiving further revenue from the federal funding stream that's called Garrett Lee Smith Youth Suicide Prevention and Early Intervention Grant.
So which one is sunsetting then, Jessica?
It's program element 60.
60 is sunsetting, okay.
And so due to the business need of this program area, Public Health is requesting that any change in funding to this program area be visited at that time. Therefore, in fiscal year 25, without other revenue, either an additional general fund request or an FTE reduction would need to occur. But I'll pause there. I've shared a lot of information. There was a lot of information in your packet that I'm happy to dig into if you have questions.
Well, thank you very much for joining us today. So there actually are three people that work within the suicide prevention program?
There, the three people, yes, three people, including myself, with a portion of my FTE in that. We have a .75 FTE project coordinator that's at the community health specialist series level one. And then Whitney's physician that she's vacating is full-time, 1.0 FTE. So while, so while it's three people, it's, what is that? One, one, or is that two-point something? It's just almost two FTE.
Yes.
Well, thanks for putting this in a, you know, four, five-year horizon. I mean, that kind of helps put it in place, stabilizes this program and that position, knowing that those program element dollars are going to be there from the federal funding stream for the next few years.
So when you list on page, the page where you have the position control request form, it shows a step one salary. So that's the beginning salary, and it goes up, there'll be seven steps from that upwards, correct?
I believe those positions go upwards to nine-step levels.
At five cent, five percent a year?
That is a great question that I do not know.
I think they're seven. I think with the class and comp, we put everything pretty much at seven.
Whitney, since we're talking about youth suicide, I was just reading that, I read a story about a young man that committed suicide. He became an everyday marijuana user. And now the THC in some of the marijuana out there, I've seen it in a couple of different articles, is up to 80% THC in some things. And the complications of that, considering what, in the 1990s, it was up 4%. So I'm just wondering, I haven't talked to Dr. Barry lately about it, but I'm just wondering, did you have any thing that you could update us on that?
Well, I can say that you've identified a couple of risk factors there, and, and that is, the risk factors for, that put someone more at risk for suicide are depression, which we know the use of THC and marijuana do contribute to, and the other risk factor being substance use. So it is a strong connection between substance use and suicide as well. But also keep in mind, there are constellation of other, of other risk factors. But yes, the use of, of drugs, including marijuana, is significant.
I was reading about Pueblo, Colorado, who had embraced marijuana when they legalized it in 2014. And part of the article was from the emergency room doctors. And that's, that's the other side of the story. So, anyway. Yeah. You know, you've, you've got the, you know, it's making money, but what is it doing to our youth? So I just, when I, I couldn't believe that they said something, some products were up to 80%. So is there a motion or any more questions?
Did you have another comment? I thought you were maybe thinking something.
Well, commissioners, I, I think the important question is whether you agree that a lead position is necessary in the suicide prevention program. In all due respect to the Health Department, I, I don't buy into the budgetary argument so much as, you know, when I look at positions as part, as budget officer for the county, I look at the classifications. You know, this is going from a two to a three, which is higher cost generally. And, I mean, to say that, you know, because, having to do with what step they're hired at is a little bit of a shell game. Again, I, you know, no offense intended, but I think the more important question is whether you agree that a, a lead is required.
How many leads do we have in the Health Department, do you know?
I don't offhand.
I don't know that answer either, although I do know that the, at the community health specialist level three, we currently, the department has currently two staff at that level. I have one of those staff and the other live with emergency preparedness.
Only two? That seems really low for, what's that?
Only two. Sorry, I was.
So there are also, this is Tom Kuhn, Community Health Managers, there are also three public health educator, three physicians. Sometimes those get confused with community health specialists. So Jessica is, is correct that there's only two, in public health, only two community health specialist threes.
So then, Jessica, question, is this more of an opportunity to attract the talent? Or is this a credential-driven, I mean, I guess it's both the same ways, but is this credential-driven? As in, this is the next, you know, masters or whatever the, you know, the credentials are?
No, I, I would say it's really driven by the, the nature of the work, the complexity of the work. It certainly will help to recruit at the appropriate level, but it's, it's more driven by the fact that this, this particular position, we rely heavily to be very level-headed, smart in making decisions in a, a very stressful situation with essentially leading an incident command structure to inform the response after a sudden loss, which could, which definitely includes suicide deaths.
So, and we're also talking about an opioid crisis currently, I believe. I just saw that information coming out, a 70% increase in opioid overdose. I believe, was that, would, would they actually kill themselves with suicide, Jessica? It was a state number.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not aware of that information. I definitely can follow up, so.
Okay, I know. I know, I'm not sure how wide it was. I just know it was a huge increase. And it's a bit what they were talking about with the lockdown and, you know, what's happened to people that are locked down.
So I'm reading here a little bit on your summary here in the background and policy implications, because this is a new, we just did the class and comp study. and policy implications, because this is a new, we just did the class and comp study where you looked at all the positions and reclassified a bunch. So we're asking to do this now, a couple of years later. But it says, within seven days after a suicide, I guess, appropriate intermediate, immediate, intermediate, and long-term response plan for each reported death. Well, the, I've been personally involved in a, with a good friend whose son killed himself and the, I'm wondering what you do after. I mean, it seems like the important work was done, would have been done before they killed themselves. What, what's done afterwards? I guess that relates to the child. I mean, it's, maybe it's, is it relating to family or what, what is that?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. A couple of things, this, the, those mandates were not in place at the time of the class and comp. So those were definitely things we've grown into. And you're right, the bulk of our work should be in the prevention and upstream. What you're hitting on there is that there is a lot of prevention that can be done. And it's very important to consider what we can do when a suicide death occurs, because the way that our community and our youth-serving organizations respond to that, adolescent suicide death can either increase or decrease suicide risk. So it becomes really critical, we, that we have some expertise on, on the ground supporting our youth-serving organizations. So that can look like a variety of different things. But I'll give just a sampling. It can look like actually drafting the communication that goes to parents in the school. It can be other communication opportunities. It looks like developing a, an immediate plan for that particular organization. Do we, we assess for individuals that we believe are at heightened risk because of that, and perhaps the relationship that, that they had with that particular young person. We ensure that resources are provided. We conduct outreach to family members that are left behind, bringing them resources and connecting them to some of the local offerings that we have. In more of, as we move out from that point in time of death, we're also looking at other things that happen. So our, our memorials being conducted in a, in a way, in a safe manner. Our, our, oftentimes, there are additional, there's additional increase by a family to bring attention to suicide prevention. And we work a lot with those families to ensure, to the best of our ability, that safe messaging is occurring. So, so quite a, it's a mixture. It really depends on the circumstance of the particular situation, just to give you an example.
Well, so in, in society today with a pandemic and the dynamics, you know, remote school, all the different things that are happening right now, I definitely want to support this program. You know, I'm almost, I'm right on the edge of really wanting to go one way or the other on this. I know we could get support and this person in there. As I say, you see, I asked the question of, is this pretty much, is this the recruiting thing? And you're saying it's getting the next higher throughput or higher, you know, more experienced, responsible person in there. So I'm just trying to share that, I'm kind of just right on the edge of a decision like this today.
I think that, you know, I, I want to be supportive of the program. I think that the risk for suicide will increase with, for a variety of factors, including what you're saying, the pandemic, the closure of the schools, the gaming excessive, electronic divide, I mean, there's a whole variety of things. I guess I am interested in what Tom said with regard to leadership position. I really don't have a feel for that part of it. And I don't know what the difference between a lead and a, you know, two and three is really. And I didn't, I'm surprised we only have two in the department or, so.
Well, and then the, the funding for this. So the other two program elements are stable funding? So the, the variable is the general fund allocation from the Health Department's point of view?
Uh, I, I actually, no, I would say that, that doesn't feel like the variable to me. The, the funding variable seems more applicable to Program Element Sixty, of which was a competitive grant that they are issuing through a program element. And we were, the, the state was only able to issue those grants in four years. So we will, we know we will lose that revenue source in fiscal year 25. But we also don't know if the state will be successful at another Garrett Lee Smith federal grant. So at this point in time, that is the primary unknown, the four years.
But for the next four years, those two program elements are stable. So the state legislature is committed to their program element, too?
As far as I know.
Okay, because my point is, if we, if we're going from step two to step three, that $7,000 difference is general fund, basically. You know, that's, that's the commitment. That's what I would conclude. And it talks about a $24,000 line item. So then, on one hand, I like the idea of empowering our Health Department to reduce the variables in the budgeting. So this is for Cheryl's moment, you know. So then, you know, there's less variables year to year. Because we see it every year, you know, things are coming, things are going. And the Health Department, we're trying to find positions for the people we have. And the, you know, they get down to the point one and point two, tenths of an FTE to, to, you know, fill the positions. So as I say, I'm still not putting direction to this. I'm just sharing with what I'm thinking.
I would say also that I think, you know, in my program area, we're historically dependent on very pennyworth funding streams. These, to the best of our ability, are stable through, beyond fiscal year 25, with the one exception, to the best of our abilities, you know, out, things can change.
Well, I know that the reason why we received the Garrett Lee Smith Youth Suicide Prevention and Early Intervention Grant was because our numbers are on the higher end for the state. And that, that's very, you know, that's unfortunate. I know when you look at the surveys by our youth, they usually are at the higher end of drug use, drinking, everything, you know. And so therefore, we did get that one grant. And is, does that go through till 2025, till 2025? The Garrett Lee Smith, or is that an annual grant?
Garrett Lee Smith is Program Element Sixty, and that sunsets at the end of fiscal year 24. So we'll be needing to make some decisions during that budget season regarding that particular funding.
Okay, because that's $117,000 a year, then?
Correct.
And, but that grant is definitely recognition of the numbers that we deal with. We haven't seen, how's this year going? Is this year, how are we doing?
Yes, I'd love to answer that. And I'd also say there are just three counties that received these funds.
Is it one of Molnoma and us? And who's the other one?
And I think the others, Lane, Molnoma, and ourselves, received those. But I, I can touch on some of the data. And we are seeing, we are not, I'm happy to say we're not seeing an increase in suicide deaths based on our historical averages. In fact, we, with regard to COVID, we're not seeing an increase. And that is consistent across the state as well with regard to youth. But as you noted, we are in the higher rates. And so while I'm thrilled that we are not seeing increases, we still have too many deaths, and just, you know, one is, is too much.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'd say let's, I'm, I'm not interested in proceeding at this time. You know, if, if there's a discussion to be had, you know, we can do that offline or at a different time. I'm just thinking, you know, if we're, we're getting quiet about this right now, and it is a decision that, yeah. Jessica, I could talk to you offline on this, too.
I guess I'd like to get a little more information about this, the issue of lead and responsibility, because it's a, what we see happen is that it happens one place, and then others, people look at it, and pretty soon, you know, and that's what I've learned about personnel costs, is that, you know, and I don't know what the specific, I see them here, but I don't know what they really, we've gotten some clarity. So I guess I'd like to maybe bring it back after we have a little more clarity on that, is that?
I think we should, I think we definitely should see the different levels. And because if you look at this, this financial statement, it looks like everything's going to stay the same. But I can't imagine that it could. So what if you get a third-level person, but they really start at, at level three or level four? What does that do to your budget?
Commissioner, I could make a suggestion.
Are you talking about a step level?
I mean, how do you know if you're going to hire a level three that they're really going to start at step one?
Pardon me, I've, I've got a meeting I was committed to.
Oh, that's right.
Eleven thirty, so I'm going to leave stuff out, but I'll be back for one.
We tried really hard.
Yeah, no, it's all good.
Okay, all right. Mr. Anderson?
I was going to suggest, I think Jessica mentioned earlier that HR had done some review of their proposed position. So what I might suggest is that we bring back to you sort of an analysis of the whole section with their, what the, I guess, the two existing personnel do, what this proposed position would do, and the benefit to the program, most importantly. So you can view it in terms of, you know, what you're approving is an enhanced level of, you know, support in the community for suicide prevention based on this structure. And then we can, we can cost that out separately.
Because I, I do feel like there's increasing numbers of reasons, or of reasons for people that are, that have committed suicide and that could continue the way we're going. So I, I am concerned with what this, this prevention part of it is and how the lead, you know, that'd be good. I like your suggestion.
Okay, great. So Jessica, we are, we are really with you. We just need a bit of different information, and we will bring this back. So.
My understanding that the next step is to come back in this setting? Or to have, I guess, I need some clarity on, on what the next steps are?
Well, I'd like to see the, the true difference in step two and step three for the specialist. You know, because when you look at the statement, it looks like there's no cost at all. And yet, I know what you're doing is critical for our community. So I know we have the need, but do we really need to go to a three? Wasn't Whitney actually excellent at what she was doing? And is, I mean, is there really such a need that we need the three? Or could we stay with a two?
Jessica, I think I have a pretty good understanding of what, what would be required. So you and I can talk after the meeting and, and discuss that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tom. Well, we have Peter up there.
That's who I've got on my list to present. Is that not right? Says Peter.
Well, Peter, no, that he's the last one. We're item, item number 12.
Thought we just did that.
No, we were doing 11.
Well, you must have a new agenda.
Well, I may not have an old one.
Yes, as far as I knew, I was batting after Jessica.
Really? Oh, my gosh, well, my, is yours revised? Is it stamped revised?
I don't know.
Okay, I'm getting a text message from Sharon, I missed.
No, mine isn't revised, it doesn't say anything.
Okay, fine. So let's go to item 13 then, and I'll see what Sharon told me. I, go ahead, Peter.
Oh, okay.
We moved 12 to consent, okay.
Okay.
Okay, no revised, okay, consent.
Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner. I'm before you for the naming of a private road to Verhayden Ranch Drive. This is a road that goes from Bull Springs Road over to Forest Service Road 4606, often known as the Brooks Scanlon Road. It's just on the, kind of the northwest side of Bend, obviously, in the county. It's a private road. The property owner, Dr. James Verhayden, and his wife, applied for this road naming application back in August. They own all the parcels that'll be served by the road. Currently, it's, it's unpaved, it's a cinder at the start, then turns to dirt. They want it, one for ease of finding the property and the parcels that they have, but also for public health, safety reasons. When people, emergency providers are responding, it's good to have a named road instead of just that first dirt road on your right after you pass, you know, Bull Springs. So we notified the property owners. We received no comments adverse to the name. In our public notification, we, Dr. Verhayden did send us an email saying that two of the properties actually didn't use his private road. So the name will only apply to the eight parcels that he has. The area is roughly 752 acres. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have. I also have an order before you that would, as our code requires you to do, to formally name the road by passing the order. So I have an order for your consideration and signature. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, I see that. Order number 2020055, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Well, it definitely seems to make sense for not only people driving around trying to find which road you're supposed to turn on, but for emergency preparedness out there. I think it's very important. I appreciate you letting us know the details on our update on Monday.
Yeah, I think we've been informed about this. I'm, I'm supportive of it. And I guess I would then move Board Signature Order Number 2020-055, naming a private road as Verhayden Ranch Drive.
And I'll second that as chair. Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, thereby approving order number, assigning the name of Verhayden Ranch Drive to a private road which extends from Bull Springs Road to USFS Road Number 4606, aka the Brooks Scanlon Road. So it's order number 2020-055. We will be signing that order.
All right, thank you for your time.
No, thank you, Peter, for your time. Okay, therefore, now that we've completed item number 13 on our agenda, we will now recess for lunch and reconvene at 1:00 PM. So with our COVID update at that time and our CARES Act funding update. So please join us then. Thank you very much. There it is. Okay, good afternoon. We're going to reconvene with our Dueshitz County Board of Commissioners, and we have our COVID update, COVID-19 update. Nahad, do you want to take it away? Oh, Nahad, we're on a time schedule, and we have 30 minutes today because they're actually kicking us out today.
So it's George Conway. Actually, I'm giving the first.
Okay, well, we only have. Okay, well, we only have 30 minutes, because we do, we are going to be removed from the room because of the voting, so.
Well.
So go ahead.
If someone can start my video in, and then I'll share my screen, please.
And this is Commissioner DeBonne. I'll do a quick introduction, so remember, this was my request from a couple weeks ago, just kind of introduction to the virus opposed to a bacteria, what COVID is, and just a little bit of science behind it. So Dr. Conway and I went over this yesterday, and it, this thing, it could go anywhere from 10 minutes to a couple hours, depending on how deep we get into these discussions.
Well, we don't have a couple hours.
Well, that's my point, so we just got to be real careful, because him and I started talking about some of these slides.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll point out that my goal is to just give a survey of key recent developments and findings, and time permitting, I'll be happy to. So this is just a review of the more recent medical science per Commissioner DeBonne's request. Can you see, can you see? Yes, okay. The first question had to do with the difference between a virus and bacteria. Basically, viruses are very small, bacteria are small but can be seen in a light microscope. Viruses depend upon the host, the animal or plant that they invade, for many of the aspects of life, to feed them and to reproduce them, whereas bacteria are sort of on their own. This is the way that a virus hijacks, the SARS-CoV-2, the virus that caused COVID-19, gets into a human cell, and it's an RNA virus, so it sends the coding encoded in the genetic material, the RNA, and it basically has the host cells make copies of itself, and those are spit out of the cell. We all know the symptoms, the things that have been well documented throughout the outbreak, have been fever or chills, muscle or body aches, cough, shortness of breath, et cetera, the things that have become more prominent as we see more clients, or gastrointestinal symptoms, and loss of taste or smell. So these are all regarded now as, as sort of key symptoms for the presence of the virus.
But some of these could be the regular flu, too, could they not?
Yes, they could be a cold, they could be another coronavirus, they could be the flu, they could be many other viruses, and that's one of the reasons that testing is key. So this is a, if I understood Commissioner DeBonne's question correctly, this talks about the virus and then our response, and through time, typically, the virus is reproducing rapidly, and as the body starts sensing it, we start providing defenses against it, which the initial one is often fever, and then various cells and chemicals mobilizing. COVID, we now know, can have effects on many different organs, so it invades respiratory tract, the lungs, it often reproduces in the lungs, and then as it enters the body, typically through the lung, and it, and it gets into the circulatory system, the main thing it causes is inflammation, and that's, of course, the body's response to its invasion. But if you have very high viral count, or you have either very efficient or some difference to your immune system, that can, that can result in things like blood clots, and even something called cytokine storm, and cytokine storm, and that is where the messenger chemicals signal so energetically that the body sort of overreacts. So you can end up having blood clots and other problems, as well as general clotting problems, and those can affect many other organs in the body. So this is a staging system, it's one of the staging systems that are used, and basically, uninfected is no color, green is ambulatory mild disease, and the goal in caring for people with this illness is to try to keep them in this ambulatory mild disease. That means they're walking around, and they may need a little bit of assistance with medicines, et cetera, maybe to help with breathing. What often occasions hospitalization is people are suddenly having more trouble breathing or other discomfort, and they may be hospitalized, and then if they don't have really good oxygenation to their extremities, typically judged by a pulse oximeter on one of their fingers, they may be put on oxygen. Now, if the disease progresses, they may require more and more oxygen, and then they may start to breathe very, very fast, and they get to a point where they're breathing so fast that they start becoming exhausted. That's what we would call impending respiratory failure, and that's what we want to avoid, but if we cannot avoid it, then they may require being ventilated, and these are just markers for different, different extent of ventilation necessary, whether or not they also need things to help them with their circulation, or perhaps even be ventilated, and their blood oxygenated by a machine outside the body, and then, of course, the cardinal thing that we're trying to avoid is death. This is just a schematic of mechanical ventilation with a ventilator, and basically, the ventilator has output, and it also has sensing devices so that it doesn't blow too much air, create too much pressure at any one time. It's humidified, and basically, it pushes air, and then allows it to come out, and may actually have some negative pressure to help get the carbon dioxide out. So I did ask Dr. Fawcett the question, and I'm sorry, Dr. Fawcett, our health officer's not able to attend today, he has a very heavy clinical load this week, but he did share with me some of the goals per your question, Commissioner, and the main goal in caring for someone with COVID-19 is to prevent further damage to the person while their immune system fights the infection. That would be by boosting in response for things, using things like convalescent plasma, which we've talked about, which is antibodies that are in the fluids, blood fluids from people that have recovered. A similar approach could be that, we all heard about Regeneron when the president was treated a few weeks ago, that was a synthetic monoclonal antibody in very high quantities. The second approach is to try to slow the replication of the virus, and that's the role of the drug remdesivir, an antiviral drug, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. And then the things that we try to avoid, as I mentioned earlier, cytokine storm, that's where the messenger chemicals that lead inflammation get out of hand, and then you may need to use corticosteroids such as methylprednisolone, or one of the other, one of the other steroids that I'll talk about in a moment. Two other goals are to alleviate suffering, and then trying to reduce contagion in the hospital and in the community, and then, as I mentioned before, the goal of mechanical ventilation is to support patients in respiratory failure, waiting for their natural response to manage the virus. So some things have been learned. There have been, drugs have been repurposed, so remdesivir is a drug that had been developed as a HIV drug, was tried for Ebola, there's also malaria, antimalarial drugs have been repurposed, or tried to be repurposed, antibodies, which would be from recovering patient plasma, as I mentioned, and then, of course, we're developing vaccines. Dexamethasone is another corticosteroid which can be given, which has shown effectiveness. It's one of the two drugs that are now demonstrably effective. This dexamethasone, I believe, is still under an EUA experimental use, but through our clinical protocols, and it reduces in seriously ill patients, the likelihood of them dying. The other drug is remdesivir, an antiviral drug, and this does not cure illness, but for people that are seriously ill requiring hospitalization, it does shorten the course of the illness from an average of 15 days to 10 days, so it's definitely helpful. The vaccine, there's a variety of ways, sort of mechanical approaches to developing vaccines, and time doesn't really permit me to go into each of these, but those include inactivated viruses, live attenuated viruses, RNA-based, which is the genetic material that's in this virus, DNA-based, which would be to train the body to react in other ways, and in a variety of other models. The thing that's really interesting about vaccine development is that we're right now in the middle of very rapidly developing vaccines. The polio vaccine was conceived 60 years, almost 60 years before it was implemented, and so it took a long time. Ebola, we do have a relatively effective vaccine, it was deployed in the Congo last year, it took about 15 years to develop. SARS-CoV-1, which is the SARS that occurred in 2003 and '04, and MERS, which is the even more virulent Middle Eastern coronavirus. There's no vaccine for either of those yet, and we're trying to get there in 12 to 18 months. The thing that works in our favor is we have a very sophisticated understanding of the human genome, the human genetic material, as well as a very rapidly developing field of molecular biology. So phase one, this is if you have a vaccine you want to try out, phase one is just safety, that can be done relatively quickly and a relatively small number of participants. Phase two, checks for safety and starts looking for efficacy, which is just the theoretical production of something that may show effectiveness. But phase three, and these two can be done quite quickly and relatively small numbers of participants, looking for gross toxicity, looking for more subtle problems, but it's only when you do phase three, where you're testing it on tens of thousands of persons, you really start getting an idea of how well it works, and also a much broader assessment of whether or not it has some untoward health effects, and you've heard about two different, two different vaccine lines that have been stopped, and one has been restarted already in the trial again. So this is the opportunity to actually see if it works, and then the main way it's done is you give half of the subjects something that's not a vaccine, water saline solution, and then the other half vaccine, and then you see whether the rate of people who are vaccinated is lower, the infection rate is lower than the others. There's also discussion about what's called a challenge trial, which is we actually give the virus to some of the vaccinated persons and see if they do better than people that are so challenged otherwise, but that's ethically problematic in this case, because there's no definitive treatment. So the other thing we've learned is that some things about the virus, which is that it does seem to travel through air, and of course, it proliferates without masking and without social controls, it can proliferate very quickly. This is just one case in Arizona, which was reported on AMWR, and they basically had a fairly rigorous stay-at-home order, they released that, the rates went way up in a period of about five or six weeks. They reduced things like bars, restaurants, and put a universal masking requirement to considerable effect. This is summary, 151% increase in cases after stay-at-home order was lifted within a few weeks, and then after the prevention efforts, a 75% reduction. We have learned that the virus can remain suspended in small moisture droplets for prolonged period of time in a still-air environment, but we do know that masking works, and there's been studies looking at airlines that enforce masking versus those that didn't, and greatly diminish transmission rate in the mask enforcement. We also have a fairly good hierarchy now of the least dangerous to the most dangerous activities, so opening the mail the least and going to a bar the most. So this is just the summary of what we know, I'd say much better than we knew two or three months ago. This is the, the sort of hotspot is if you're not wearing a mask, you're in a crowded place in indoors, that's a real problem. Things that may decrease risk are having masks, outdoor space, and distancing. And the only other thing is that we are no longer recommending use of face shields for routine protection of other people from your exhalations, they're really only to be used for special circumstances, such as if you're communicating with people that need to be able to lip read, or if somebody has to go out, and they're so impaired, basically, in their breathing, that they, they can only tolerate that. So that, that's just an update on a number of new, thanks.
Great, thank you so much, Dr. Conway. Any questions?
Thank you very much. As I say, there's a couple just interesting ideas in there, and the careers. I used to work in a biotech company, we were doing human genome research for drug discovery, but there is definitely great work happening around the world, some of the institutions, the United States of America, the private industry, so as I say, a couple of these slides, I'm thinking, man, there's just careers in there also, which is, you know, kind of a byproduct of us getting engaged with this so much, being in a pandemic around the world. But thank you so much for getting through that and sharing the big picture.
Sure, thanks very much. There is a lot of innovation going on, I hope you benefit from it.
Yes, thank goodness, we're in America. Yes, I believe, Nahad, we're not going to be able to see you, but you are, your screen is up, so if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners. I hope you can hear me well.
We can.
Okay, Commissioner, given the time limitations, should I skip a few things, like maybe the?
The quiz? No, we got to do the quiz. We've got, we've got prizes, remember?
Sure, I'm at your service. So thank you again for inviting me. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadra Zodi, I'm the Director of Public Health for Dushu County Health Services. To start off, Commissioners, I just, I really want to thank you and acknowledge you for yesterday's State of the County presentations, and for highlighting and expressing your gratitudes for health services and our overall COVID response, and investigation, and contact tracing, and messaging, wraparound services, outbreak testing, so we're really grateful that you express your support for us and your gratitude, and it's nice to be acknowledged by you, as I know it's not always the case in other local settings, so we don't take that for granted. So Commissioners, here's the quiz of the week. Commissioner, there, would you like to tell us what the prize is?
Yes, it's $10 coffee gift certificates, we've got a couple spots, so we'll be, we'll send them out to you.
Wow, that's, you're sweetening the deal, thank you for that. I don't know if one of the Commissioners is willing to read this?
Sure, Commissioner Henderson will, won't you? Commissioner Henderson, please.
So this week's quiz, for all you people watching, definition of close contact was recently modified by the CDC as someone who is within six feet of an infected person for a cumulative total of 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period, starting from two days before illness onset until the time the patient is isolated. True or false?
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. So just a reminder to the committee members, if you're watching this presentation on Facebook, please do, please do insert the answer in the comment section. Great, so very quickly, just to let the committee know that we do have this great website with accurate and timely information on COVID-19, and it's now available also in Spanish, so thank you very much for everyone working on this. And this is important, because we do see that our Hispanic communities are disproportionately impacted by this virus and the COVID-19 disease. As Commissioners, you know, even though our Hispanic communities are around 8% of our population, they comprise around nearly a quarter of the case counts. So we are working closely with our partners, identifying the drivers and challenges, and trying to collectively address these issues, and I know that the county, under your leadership, has allocated funding for a campaign focusing on Spanish speakers, and I believe also funding for a navigator, so thank you for that, I'm sure they're going to go a long way to address this issue. So this graph, Commissioner, is the cumulative numbers, which as of last evening stands at 1136 cases, 1,136, with 13 deaths since March 11th. Unfortunately, since yesterday or the day before, we do have more cases which are going to be reported, or already might have been reported, which doesn't bode well for this week, and I'll get into that. And I'll get into that here in this slide. What we see here is the number of new cases by the week. Last week, we had 75 cases reported, which was 32% higher than the previous week, which was 57 cases. So far this week, I was about to say we have 15 cases reported, but then because of the afternoon, OHA has reported additional 26 cases, it seems like.
Ooh, I just saw that, Nahad, on my email. Uh-oh. That's more than we've been having, so.
And unfortunately, I think tomorrow's not going to look good either. So I think as we close this presentation, it's good to remind ourselves of key milestones coming up, especially with Halloween and the behaviors we should exhibit so that we can address what's happening right now. Commissioners, I do want to highlight this because I know Halloween, perhaps during Halloween, there isn't much movement or travel, but definitely during Thanksgiving, there will be. So I'd like to share this in advance. The data suggests from our local community that right after a holiday, the week after, we see a higher proportion of cases who claim they have had travel history. And then the week after that, we see a bump in numbers. So what happens is that right during the holidays, people are traveling. They might acquire it. They might import it back to our community. And then the virus starts circulating in our households, in our close contacts, in our businesses. And then we see a bump in case numbers in our community. So it's really important to acknowledge and understand that travel and movements are associated with higher risk of acquiring this virus.
But Nahad, so Halloween's really different than Labor Day or Fourth of July in the sense it's not, people don't travel to. But you say Thanksgiving, though, would be a big, it's kind of the kind of holiday you're talking about, right?
Precisely. Precisely. Halloween, Commissioner, we're going to, if there is time, at the very end, I was going to mention that certainly, I think Halloween, it's a good, fun sort of milestone for us and events. And it's good for us to engage in it. There are ways to do it in a safe way. So for example, for us, we're going to put a basket of chocolate outside of our driveway so that when kiddos come by, they can grab it and go ahead. We're going to avoid anyone knocking on the door and for us to kind of interface with anyone. So there are really good messaging around this issue developed by Whitney and Morgan on our website. So I encourage the committee members to take a look at those. But certainly, I think there are safe ways of engaging in Halloween events. This next slide, Commissioner, is, Commissioners, is looking at cases broken down by age groups. And we are seeing a higher proportion of 20- to 29-year-olds acquiring and transmitting the virus in our community. And the reasons, as mentioned before, are both behavioral and occupational. Much of the behaviors, of course, are driven by risk perception. We have this sense of invincibility, and we perhaps don't feel we're at risk of acquiring this disease or we don't think about the severity of the disease. Unfortunately, there isn't time, I think, given we have five minutes left for me to go through this story, which I wish I could. So maybe I'll skip it now.
You want to bring it back next week?
Sure. I'll be happy to. By the way, yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, you were going to present every other week. So if you want to do that in two weeks, that would be great.
I would love that. Thank you. And in fact, the person who shared this story with us is also willing to come and share it in person, which would maybe something that perhaps for your consideration as we move forward. But just to say that this risk perception amongst the young perhaps should be revisited because literature is, you know, the latest evidence is showing that in this particular case, for example, we saw that among the 201 young COVID patients included in the study, 70% had evidence of ongoing damage to one or more organs four months after the diagnosis. So this is not to scare us or to put fear in us, but really to, I think, right-size our level of risk perception to this disease, no matter what our age category is.
So Nahad, I want to go back to the previous slide. I was looking at this. So you're saying there's an ever-increasing number of 20- to 29-year-olds, you know, that's about a quarter of the number of cases. I just did the math. From 70 to the highest age is only 126. That one 10-year period is 226. You could actually throw in all the 60 to 69s, and you're not that much more. You could go from 60 to whatever upper limit there is is equal to the number in the 20 to 29 now. So it's a quarter, you know, and the most vulnerable are still the upper. I just wonder, you know, as we keep going into this thing with, oh, we're seeing spikes, and there's a lot of press about it. This population of 20 to 29, you're only going to convince them that they shouldn't do things if they really feel at risk. I don't know if some, I don't know, I don't feel, I think they've just concluded they're not. And their parents can't tell them not to do anything anymore, so I don't know. That's what I see as the problem. I mean, you've got everybody, from 60 to the end of age group is equal to just one bracket there.
Yep.
Yeah. Commissioner Henderson, I think you raised a couple of good points here. So if I may just hone in on it for a second. So this age group, what we're observing is that basically this virus is not jumping from one person to another in a linear fashion. So there is this cluster pattern or this, what we call super-spreading pattern, that we are observing. And 20- to 29-year-olds seem to be at the center of this super-spreading pattern, where one of them is in a setting, perhaps in a poorly ventilated indoor setting, where they're spreading this virus to dozens of people versus, you know, one-to-one ratio. So that's part of what we're seeing here. And then related to your point in terms of influencing their behaviors, I think this action you have taken, decision you Commissioners have taken in terms of a campaign for Spanish-speaking populations, I think it's really commendable. And what we can do is build on this platform to try to also expand our reach to this age category and even, you know, 30 to 39-year-olds, 40 to 49-year-olds as well, and try to influence their behaviors. Because I'm not a big fan of any more coercive actions, frankly. I think it makes more sense for us to try to influence their behaviors.
Thank you.
If I may continue again, because I think I have a minute or two, and I want to respect your time and the voting process. This next slide is on testing, so testing by week. We are seeing perhaps a slight increase in weekly tests since we've had, since this month in October versus, let's say, in September. And this is primarily driven by, of course, the increase in the number of cases and their contacts. So we are keeping, I think, we're doing quite well in terms of our testing capacity in the community. Of course, we could always do more, but it doesn't seem like there is a supply issue in terms of testing capacity right now. The positivity rate as well, as indicated here in this red dashed line, it remains below 5%. Of course, there's variation from week to week, but generally, we're seeing that it's below 5%, which is quite important, especially when it comes to the school metrics. Commissioners, in terms of the hospitalization, this is, this slide is looking at St. Charles data. And it's important to highlight that this is not just Deshute County. This is for tri-county. And so it's a regional indicator. And the admissions here may or may not be Deshute County residents. So far, since the beginning of this pandemic, we've had 65 Deshute County residents ever hospitalized. This morning, I believe we had seven total admissions. And two of them are from Deshute County. Okay, I'm just going to wrap it up, if I have a minute or two, by just mentioning that the flu virus seems to be circulating in our, in central Oregon. Last few weeks, we've had both influenza A and B positive tests. So this is something for us to keep in mind. Vaccines are available. They're readily accessible. All people, with some caveats, of course, over six months, are eligible to get it. And it's really, it really makes sense this year, especially more than any other year, for us to get vaccinated, given the double burden that it would put on our healthcare system as well as protecting us and the vulnerable populations. The key messages here, Commissioners, is that really movement and travels are associated with higher risk of perhaps acquiring and transmitting the virus. So if we do travel or we must travel, we should do it as safe as possible. There is disproportionate transmission and burden, especially on the Hispanic communities and the young adults that we're seeing. However, there are difference makers here as well in terms of the flu vaccine, which protects against the flu, not against COVID-19. But it does help with lessening the complications of the disease, of flu virus, as well as the burden on our healthcare system. And there are simple behaviors, like wearing masks, physical distancing, washing our hands, which I know Commissioner Dare always mentions, that can help us reduce transmission. And of course, there's no shame in acquiring this virus. Once we have it, please, we have to make sure that we are cooperating with our investigators and contact tracers and provide as much information as possible so that we can contain this virus. And we should never compromise our Deshute values, which is being smart, united, and caring. So moving forward, with this beautiful weekend coming up on trick-or-treating, there are, as I mentioned, some safe ways, or safer ways, of celebrating this event, which I look forward to. And they're available online through our website, which I like to encourage our community members to refer to. So now in terms of the quiz, the answer is true.
We have two winners.
Wonderful.
Yes, we do have two winners. But first of all, I have to ask you a question. What are your twins going to be for Halloween?
I believe one of them is a witch and the other is Hulk.
Oh, Joel and Kate were the winners for the contest. So congratulations, Joel and Kate. And I'm glad that your kids have their costumes all picked out.
Absolutely.
And what are you going to be? You're walking with them, are you not?
Sorry, Commissioner?
Do you have a costume to wear, Nahad?
Yes, I'm going to be a Deshute County Health Service servant.
With the mask on, right?
The mask.
Yes. Don't forget your mask.
Thanks again for inviting us.
No, no, thank you very much. And thank you for a quiz that had clear answers. And let's hope, you're saying the number's going to be bad again tomorrow, too?
It looks that way, Commissioner. It looks that way. And Commissioner, just on this point here, in this quiz, because there's an important message here, is that before we were thinking that, you know, the exposure should be in, perhaps is in 15-minute increments. So if we were around someone for 10 minutes and we moved on, maybe the risk was not so high. But now we're learning that it's really around a viral dose and it's 15-minute cumulative. So it could be five minutes in the morning, five minutes in the afternoon, five minutes at night. So it's a 15-minute totality here in terms of our exposure. And that's what this slide changes addressing. So we have to be careful as committee members.
Okay. All right. Well, and we don't have any parties that we can allocate the 26 test positives to then. I take it it's just from the general public?
Yeah, we're going to get more information when we do our investigation and contact tracing, which we're on the clock doing right now. So all of our team members, in fact, we're pulling from other sections, too, to start calling everyone because we try to reach out to them within 24 hours.
Right.
But we just hope, we just, we just hope and pray that our patients are cooperative with our investigators and contact tracers.
Yes, for sure. Okay. Well, that probably should tell everyone to follow the rules for trick-or-treating then.
Thank you.
No, thank you so much, Nahad. Thank you for the wonderful job that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, so we now have CARES funding update. I believe I see Greg on the screen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm told that I can't video in, so I'm going to be creative here. But I do want to share my screen with you, so get out here real quick.
They can come downstairs and just...
Yes.
Okay. So you should see the screen in front of you?
We see your picture. Oh, there you go.
There we go. Okay. So this is our Weekly CARES Act, Funding Act update. And just for the record, Greg Mine County Treasurer and CFO. And for those who may be watching this for the first time, I thought I'd just give a real quick background on what we're talking about, since we have a tendency to get down the road and forget that we use words that maybe other people don't understand. So back several months ago, the state of, or the federal government passed through the state of Oregon to the county $6.4 million in coronavirus relief funding support. And that was approved through the CARES Act. So sometimes we use those words interchangeably. Since that time, we had, up until September 30, we had claimed three reimbursements, and that's what you see on your screen here. The format that you're looking at is the exact same format that is submitted to the state of Oregon. So they see this exact format. So you can see we've had three different reimbursement requests. All three of those, May, June, and August 7 have been reimbursed. And on Friday, this last Friday, we submitted a reimbursement request for costs incurred through September 30 of $1,570,473, this number here. So this is all new from last week when I reported to you on Wednesday. I'm showing you in red what is new. So year-to-date, or through September, we've been reimbursed for about $3.4 million in expenses. So in addition to that, I'm going to scroll down the screen.
Have they already reimbursed us for that?
We claimed the reimbursement. We have not received that yet.
That's what I wondered.
For which?
Yeah.
The $1.57 that they just sent in last Friday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Friday. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. And so...
Before you go, so I thought we've allocated, we've allocated quite a bit more. So you're saying we're, we just, we haven't spent it or we're waiting to get it, so we spend it, or what? What's the red column?
Yeah, the red, anything in red is a change from last week I showed you. So I just want to highlight what's changed. But that's a good question, and I was just going to get into that. So what I showed you above is the reimbursement schedule that the state receives. But as of that August number through August number, we had $4.6 million in unallocated funds. And that's been the exercise that we've been spending time on here below, is allocating dollars out into the community to be spent on CARES Act eligible expenses. So we, from that point, we hadn't actually claimed any reimbursement expenses, even though the board approved them and they had been spent in the field. So as of the end of September, we had spent some of it, some of those funds. So I'm trying to keep this somewhat simple.
So keep it simple this way, do, why are we not spending the funds we've allocated?
We are spending those, but there's dollars that we've spent after September 30 that have been committed that aren't showing up yet as reimbursed. So let me, let me walk through this and maybe it'll become clearer. So down below here, these are all of the allocations that the board has approved. And I'm going to go down here and just pick on this rental assistance for Neighbor Impact. So the board approved $600,000. Year-to-date, we've spent, or through September, they have claimed reimbursement for, and we have paid, we have reimbursed Neighbor Impact $178,650. You'll notice a note over here that says, as of 10/27, they have fully spent the $600,000 obligation. The difference between them spending 100% of the allocation of the $600,000 and the $178,000 that we've reimbursed them are costs that have been incurred after September 30. So we will start to see those come in and us reimburse those in the next reimbursement cycle.
Which of course must be done prior to, what is it, December 30, 31?
December 30.
So when you say they've spent it all, what do they, they just call you and say, we're done spending it, so we'll start sending it in, or what? I mean...
No, they, so, so once, so the way that goes is once the board approved, we issued a contract with each... a contract with each organization that the funds were approved to. And then they will submit invoices against that. So there's invoices that they have not submitted yet, or we have not paid until after October 1st.
Well, I get that, but how'd you know they've already spent it if you haven't got invoices for it? That's what I'm, because you've got a lot of different categories here. I just wonder how are you finding out things are spent or not?
So back up here using this example, I asked each of the program managers, all of these folks out here at Neighbor Impact, for a weekly update, and this is the update that they provided for today.
Okay. So can we, is that the case in all these then? You're just, you're, you've been updated, but you haven't, you haven't been invoiced? That's the--
Exactly.
Okay.
I've also asked them to give us a little bit of an update on outcomes, you know, what the funds have been spent out and what kind of an impact have those, have those funding allocations made? All right.
So as you go through this, I don't know if you were going to talk about more. So you got the childcare at Neighbor Impact. We've only re, we allocated it a couple of months ago, but they've only invoiced $2,000 of $400,000?
That's correct. To the end of September.
Oh.
And then, and then you'll notice the note over here on the side that as of the 27th, as of yesterday, they had spent almost $80,000 of that. So we just have not been invoiced for the additional $78,000 yet. So I'm going to roll to the bottom, and in terms of the amount of that original $4.6 million that the board allocated, we're basically at about zero. We have an uncommitted balance of $3,462. But we have a new request that was attached to your packets from the Bend Next regarding resiliency grants. And the proposal there is to shift, shift the commitment that the board made here, and I've highlighted in yellow, it's $50,000 for the Micro Center for Childcare, and repurpose those funds down into this Bend Next resiliency grant line. And the memo basically describes the reason for that. There's, but I've got Katie Brooks on the line. We can patch her in. And she can explain it further.
So this is regarding the $50,000 that we already allocated? This is just saying where it's going?
Well, you've already allocated it here, but the request is to reallocate it down to this, this line here, this $250,000 in resiliency grants.
So, so if I could, before we go on to that, we really didn't finish on the whole allocation versus expenses. I'm kind of surprised that, you know, we'd all allocated this a couple of months ago, and we've only spent through September a quarter of that. But you think they're going to, everybody's going to spend all their money? Is it, it seems like the need is probably there for some of these already. It seems like it's kind of going slow to me. But what's your take on that? I mean, it's--
Yeah, we really started this towards the end of August, and then we were hitting the ground immediately, getting contracts in place so that we could actually let the money out. In the meantime, providers had been busy working on each of their respective areas. So this only represents essentially a month's worth of expenditures, maybe even less based on the time it took to get them under contract, which in some cases was only a few days. And that's why I ask for updates over here in the status column, so that we can keep track and make sure that folks are on track to be able to spend the money by the end of the year. And if they're not, I ask them to let me know so that we can come back to the board and repurpose those dollars.
Okay, good. Because do you feel like there's some that might not make it? Or, I mean, it, I'm just kind of surprised because I thought, you know, this was kind of emergency funding for a lot of different entities was the intent, and I'm surprised that it wouldn't be.
Well, the general feeling is that they are, that everybody is doing what they can to get this out into the field. And a lot of times, if you read these notes out on the right-hand side, it'll give you a little different perspective than perhaps the amount of money actually spent through the end of September.
Okay, I'll read those notes. Thanks.
We have Katie on the line by chance?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there she is.
Okay.
Okay, Katie, you're on.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair Adair and Commissioners Henderson.
We did that yesterday, yes.
Yes, I was really grateful for your time yesterday. I wanted to start out by saying thanks very much for, for doing that presentation. We had really good attendance and a lot of really good information. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie.
For being on the webinar that was countywide. It was great. So I'm coming to you today to give you an update on the childcare microcenter project. And that gives you the explanation of why we're asking for the transfer over to the resiliency grants, and I'll give you an update on that as well. So we issued a request for qualifications for the microcenter, childcare microcenter grants. What that was, excuse me, operations, what that was, was a program that utilized a hub or an organizing entity that would then hire staff and populate different microcenters that could hold anywhere from four to 10 children in any one site between employers, having extra space. We aligned with a few churches, et cetera, to identify space where we could hold these pilots. We aligned up about six or seven pilots, and the RFQs came in. We had two respondents. Neither one of them were interested in running the program. They both wanted us to use their technology as a way to organize it. Both really strong proposals, but really not solving the problem. So we dug a little deeper, and here's what we concluded just this week, that none of the providers that are out there are set up or in any position right now to take a chance on doing a pilot. And one of the primary reasons for that is because, A, it's new and capital-intensive. The $50,000 was to offset those costs. But B, there is a severe shortage in staffing. And the reason why is those folks are only paid 16 bucks an hour on average, and they're really afraid of the risk of exposure. So everyone has staff shortages, and we could not figure out how to mobilize that. We were working with the Community College and OSU as well. OSU just opened up a childcare center in there, on their property, and they're having trouble staffing it as well. And not only that, the employers conducted surveys of folks who thought they would want to utilize childcare services on-site. And in particular, over the last month, people have been withdrawing their children and not participating in these programs because the numbers are going up and they're afraid. So you have staff that can't be found because they're afraid of catching it, and parents are afraid of exposing their kids as well. So with those two complications, that really ended this story for right now. We had figured out the liability issue. We were working with the state to expedite licensing. Everything was looking really good. But the fact of the matter is, if you can't find a provider and parents are still tentative, there are already, we found out in some of the larger centers, still openings because of this issue. So our strategy at this point is to stand down. We are reconvening in December to start to look at next year's plan of what a recovery looks like. And to have a pilot and have a plan for when there's a vaccine, and when the numbers start to go down and people actually start going back to work and feeling more comfortable putting their kids in childcare. Now, that's not to say that there's not a lot of folks out there with their children in childcare because they have to. This project, this program, the microcenters, was based more on the voluntary than the necessity. And it's just not the right time with so much uncertainty out there. The only way we could find out was to pose the question. And so we are returning to you that committed $50,000 to do with what you will. And we are going to take this up next year and, and take a new look at it after the numbers in the county start to go down and there's a vaccine. So on to the Bend resiliency grants, unless you had questions on that issue.
So just Katie, one observation, you know, that, the scenarios you were talking about are very tangible and just very acute for very, for families and working adults. My, my other thought, though, is there's a dynamic out there, you know, where mom and dad, or grandma and grandpa, and the community neighbor, you know, sometimes there's, there's, people are starting to take care of themselves, too, you know? So there's other scenarios happening around this. So, you know, we definitely want to support people in need, get working adults that want to work with children in the workplace, but also celebrate the fact that, you know, there may be some, some good opportunities for working at home and families, you know, not being dependent on those daycare slots. So, and I'm just saying, there's other scenarios that are out there.
Yep, and I, I understand, Commissioner Devone. And the fact of the matter is that there are a lot of people in need out there, and the money that you have given to childcare centers has been critical, absolutely critical to those families having an alternative, to childcare providers being able to keep their doors open. And so that work that you've done and the commitments you've made, making a huge difference in people's lives. So I don't want to underemphasize that either.
Well, and it's wonderful to know that, yeah, if we're, if we're, if the investments are getting to the right place and people are really being helped in their time of need, that's what we want to celebrate also.
Yep, and, and you can, you certainly achieved that. Any other questions about the microcenter? So our request is, if you should see fit, to transfer the $50,000 over to the resiliency grants. Last week, we issued $300,000 worth of our first wave of grants. It takes us a few weeks, not because we can't write the checks fast enough, but because a lot of these businesses need some handholding as they identify their W9s, they fill those out, they also have to go through a few hoops. According to the federal government, they need to provide receipts and proof that they have lost money during COVID, and we're walking them all through that. We expect another $300,000 to go through the door this week, if not $400,000. The City of Bend is allocating their final $500,000. We put our request in for year 250, for the full 1.25 that we have right now to give out. And I think I stated this last time I chatted with you folks, that we had about 250 applications and $4.5 million in requests. We see at least $3 million of those requests being absolutely qualifying, but we had to draw the line somewhere. So that's what we did. And the request is to transfer that $50,000 from the microcenters over to the resiliency fund. We already have a whole group of organizations lined up that are ready to receive it, and they're pre-qualified and ready to go. I think at least two, if not three, of those organizations are in the childcare field. There are also local businesses that rely on human interface to keep their doors open. They've figured out how to do it. There's yoga, there's a small banking organization, there's restaurants, there's all sorts of businesses that have put their applications in for this assistance. They all have a plan, but they need to cover the expenses that they have incurred in the impacts of COVID in these last few months. So we could put that money to immediate good use and get it out the door, if not this week, next week. And our goal is to have 100% of all the money that we've received from both you and the City of Bend out the door before the end of November. And we're pretty confident that that's not going to be a problem. The only thing that, that hangs us up, like I said, is just a lot of handholding and making sure they provide us with the documentation to keep everybody above board. So that is my request. Do you have any questions?
I do have a question, Katie. I was talking to a downtown business that received, I believe, 75% of their ask, and I'm wondering, you've got these numbers for these four businesses, but if they were in the regular pool of the 4.5 million, the 242 businesses, would they, would they still qualify for this amount of funding? Or is this, is this what they really asked for?
I'd have to look at those numbers. Almost, there were a good number of folks who didn't get the full amount that they asked for.
Right. Well, no, I would assume that they wouldn't.
Right.
Because we don't, you know, we only have 1.25. But I was just wondering, you've chosen these four, and is this 100% what each one of these four is asking for? And, and, you know, it just seems kind of like, is that fair to give them 100% when--
I see what your question is.
Yes.
So the answer is no. It varies. If it's a small amount of money and we could see the actual need, we went ahead and allocated to it. But all of these qualified applicants, and there may be one or two more because we're still working with them to see exactly what is absolutely necessary. We're having those conversations with them and trying to spread the peanut butter so that you get enough protein, but it's as far and thinly spread as we can get it so it can go farther.
Right.
So the, the answer to that is yes and no. Most of these applicants, we negotiated down by looking at their receipts and their costs and agreed to pay certain things. Some of them, the ask was just so minimal and so clear that we gave 100%. And those usually fall in the category of $15,000 or less. The ones that had more asks or where it wasn't exactly clear what they were going to use it for and that they would be able to provide documentation, we had, we gave them less. So every one of these applicants had a different story, and we took the time to really sift through their applications on what exactly they were asking to be reimbursed for and making sure that we were paying for things that we were 100% sure were fundable and meaningful.
Okay. Well, thank you for that explanation.
You bet.
So I guess I, I'm a little bit confused why these four would be chosen out of the--
242.
Out of 2 million or 3 million that wasn't funded. And then there's, they seem so different. I mean, a couple are kind of so, you know, really fulfilling a social need, and the others are just, are good for that business. I guess I don't understand the criteria that are used. I'm concerned with--
Yep, we had a whole metric of criteria that we went through. These were the, the few that fell below the line. There may be another, we're already talking to one or two others that might be added to this. So I do want to give the disclaimer that this is a moving target. I wanted to give you a sample of who was right below the line. We might be adding one or two more because we're finding out that some of the expenses that some of these folks are claiming they've, since they applied, received some other funding for, so we're reducing the amount. So this, this will continue, this process continues as we go through the applications. I just wanted to give you some sense of who's next in line. There'll probably be one, if not two, more added to that. We are not sharing this information with, with anybody, really. It's the City of Bend's information. If people want to see the full list, that's a Freedom of Information Act. But what we're trying to do is share the categories as best we can and our methodology as best we can.
Okay, so we have $50,000 is what we're talking about, that you gave back to us to reallocate for these, but you may have one or two more. So should we wait till next week? And then actually look at all six or whatever?
Well, and they've got a process where they're just, they have the big pool. So I support the fact that if we allocate, they have the authority to do the allocation, their allocation. So I don't know that we, I mean, I don't need to see the specific people at this point.
As with the City of Bend, they've used us, they are acting as a pass-through, and they've used us to do the full allocation process, to take full responsibility. And, and that's what I'm offering to you folks, is that my organization gets audited, you do not, because we are expend, I believe that's true, we're getting audited for this specific program. specific program. We've prepared for that. We've received legal advice. We crossed our Ts, dotted our Is to make sure that the methodology is defensible, and most important, that all of these applications are defensible and will fall well under the parameters of the the CARES Act. So we have set up our entire process to meet that need. And so the city has not given us any direction. They were on, they had a representative on the selection committee, and that was about it. The rest of the allocation process is left to us.
Such as the bank's brewing technology. It says they've been in business for four years with three employees. Is that 10,000, a one month of payroll? Did they get PP&amp;P? You know, I just, it seems like we just kind of have part of the story. We're if we're just either supposed to hand you the authorization or if we actually have to make a decision.
That I'm I'm putting before you that those decisions are the chambers and the selection committee that was put together to allocate the funds.
Okay.
The the names on the list that I gave you are a sample of who is below the line. We are in conversations with them and and hopefully be able to tell them that we are allocating money. We're obviously going to go a bit over, and we're going to try and shake out some money at the chamber from another grant program we received to fill the gap, just to make everybody whole.
Okay, Katie, I have a question. If there were 242 originally, of which these four are part of that 242, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, so how many of the 242 are getting funding for right now, this moment? If let's say if all the checks were written today, the 300,000 and then 400,000 this week, how many were you able to write a check to of the 242?
So those are two different questions. I believe the the total number, don't hold me to this, but this is the number in my head, was 26 recipients. And not all of those checks have been cut yet because all of them have to submit their receipts for their reimbursement for this money and W9s and and a couple of other things the federal government requires us to do as the entity that's allocating the money. So we've only written $300,000 worth of 1.25, but there were, I believe, 26 recipients on that list.
Of the first 300,000?
Right, yeah. I'll have to go back through my notes. That's not sounding right.
Well, it just seems like, gosh.
Yeah, didn't I had a question? Didn't I thought the chamber came to us not that long ago, and we gave some money for a business grant?
You did.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
Was that part of this 1.25?
Right, we out of the 250,000 to it, then we gave another 50,000, which they're giving back to us.
I get this. No, I'm going back to what we gave for business. So of the 1.25, did we give 250 of it?
That's all we get.
Because you keep talking about the Bend, the City of Bend has a right to see that. It seems like the city of County of Deschutes has a right to see all of it, too. I'm not, I was really sold on this childcare needs. I'm not, you know, I'm not as sold on some of these needs as being, I mean, this is it's not the same to me. I don't know. So I don't know, I'm a little bit confused, I think, because you are, Commissioner, about what the criteria are.
Well, I'll tell you, Commissioners, that the feedback that we've received from the many that did not get money is that many of them are shutting their doors. It can tell you absolutely unequivocally that the need is great, and we're never going to be able to fill the hole that that is existing out there in the business community in Deschutes County and in Bend.
No, I get that. I I think that's a product of what's decisions are being made about public policy, but that's different than whether this 50 is going to make, you know, maybe it affect a few businesses. But we we I think we get that, and we've been talking about it for seven months, that when you close down your society, people go out of business. It's a question of how much we should close down our society. But I guess to me personally, we, I don't know, I'm kind of surprised that 300,000 only covered 26 recipients, but I guess that's over 10,000. So I guess we just need a lot more. I wonder if Business Oregon is going to do another, because we're involved in the prior, we've given other series of these throughout the year. We've been involved in a couple and a loan, and then we help distribute the money from Business Oregon, and then I think they're giving away more money. I don't know.
They have 1.4 million for the for the Deschutes that they will be giving out.
Is any of that going to the chamber, or is it?
No, it's going through Scott's office.
So I'm looking now at the list, and it looks like, I did get this wrong, it looks like 78.
Oh, that sounds way better.
Yes, 78 received, and the reason why I have the 20 number in is because when Commissioner Dare, when you mentioned, do you give the full requested amount? We did not in many cases. And one of the benefits of doing that and really working with these individual applicants is we would have been able to only, it would have been about 25 businesses fewer had we given everybody the full amount that they had asked for. So because we negotiated with those those businesses and only paid for certain things, we were able to get up to 78 rather than 50, 55.
See, yeah, the person I knew, I believe, got 75% of what they asked for, and they were thrilled with that and very, very appreciative. So I know, Katie, we've got to get this out. You know, it's 50,000 that we'd already given you. I I I know we're really short, and I keep talking about it to the state because we've been definitely not treated as fairly as Multnomah County. And so therefore, I don't know, 50,000, you guys, what do you think?
I support this ask in getting those dollars to the pool for the for the applications they're already working on.
You know, I I support the ask because it's not very much money, but I really think what we should do is in collaboration with other government entities and chambers, we should really go back to the state and ask for more of the CARES Act because they've decided not to give it to us. And so these businesses that Kate's talking about going out of business, you know, there was, Washington County got 100 million dollars, and we got seven or six. So there's lots of, you know, this was all decided at Salem's level, and I wish that the chamber would join with us in doing that to get some of that money if if that's, you know, if we're not going to allow the businesses to operate full, so.
So Chris Cummings had said, okay, so we're up to 1.4 million, and that then they're going to go out and make, if anybody hasn't spent all their money, they're going to get that money back, and then maybe we'll have an opportunity to get those funds. But really, everyone is going to have spent their money because we did not get the funding we should have to begin with.
Yes, and Commissioners, I completely agree with you. We have been vociferous on asking the governor to release more money to municipalities and local jurisdictions because the state has held on to a large part of it, understanding that they also have budget shortages. We've been disappointed as well.
They're using part of the CARES money to pay for the state police in Portland, which has gone on, what is it, 159 days or something? Anyway, yeah, there, that's what I was told. One of the things they were using the CARES funding for was to pay for the state police. So I would have really loved to have that money come to Deschutes County for our businesses.
I agree. And a reminder that COIC just received another block of money. They're up to 1.4 million of for the tri county area.
That's what I just said.
Yep, and also, I am happy to share this full list of our grant application. You folks should have access to this because it is your money, and it's a CARES Act pass through, and I'll certainly be sharing the full list with with Greg and your team.
Thank you so much. We'd appreciate that.
You bet.
That's great. So is there a motion then?
Yeah, I moved to allocate that 50,000 to the.
To go back with our 250,000.
Bend resiliency, yeah.
Another resiliency.
Bend resiliency grants, yeah.
Grants, I'll second it.
Any further discussion, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
On the chair, both yes. Katie, thank you so much. I appreciate you getting into the details and helping us understand what's what's happening out there, so.
My pleasure. Thank you, Commissioners.
No, thank you. So I see your face, Greg.
Hey, thank you very much. Any other questions on this?
I think we're okay. We only have like $3,400, I think, on the bottom line right now, so let's hold that, and you never know what we might want to spend that on.
Pizzas for someone.
Yep, exactly. I'll be back, I'll be back next Wednesday with another update.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Greg. Okay, so now, we have other items. I have to say something first, other item. I went out to Scottsdale to a housing development. I was called and told that there's a very, very nice housing development that's going in, and it's not going to be very far from where the city is talking about putting the homeless locations. So we need to hear from the city to really make sure that that isn't an issue. I did that drive around yesterday, and yes, there, it's a really going to be an extremely nice development. They have sold signs, I think, on its 10 separate properties, sold signs on, I believe, almost every one but one. And I just, we need to hear. I know it was in the paper last week, and has anything been set up yet, Tom?
I have not heard back from the city yet since my earlier conversations. I will follow up with them.
Okay, please.
I've had, along with that, I had a call from, I think, the same people, but I also had calls from other people that are worried, you know, about what the nature of that plan is and where it's going to be and how it's going to affect people. So, yeah, it'd be nice. I guess there's nothing that the county, the city needs to do to ask our permission, but it would be, I think it's up against county land, maybe, but it's not on county land. Is that correct, or?
I don't know that they've determined a final footprint of where that might be. I just heard generally, as was reported in the paper, near the eastern end of Cooley.
And that's where I kind of was driving around. So anyway, I think, I just think, you know, it'd be really nice if we could kind of put that together. Then we have that whistleblower.
Yes, so I've got it here. I just had a couple of changes, so I can read them to you if you guys want.
Sure, that'd be great.
So the second sentence says, the Board of Commissioners would like to also emphasize the importance of this reporting tool. I was going to add in front of that, approve this new hotline and would like to emphasize it, because I wanted to show that, you know, this was something we approved, so I just wanted to add that. And then before the words, and believes is critically important to maintain trust in government, I was going to put transparency and trust. You see that, Tom? Just because that's a part of this, is transparency. You see it there?
Yeah, transparency and trust.
And then it says, in government, in our organization, by the people we serve, does this hotline provide trust and transparency to the people we serve, or does it imply, provide to employees? Because it's kind of a.
It's both.
Okay, so people serve and our employees?
It's internal and external, so either an employee.
What are we about that, what, in our organization, by the people we serve and our employees? Does that add and our employees at the end of that sentence?
Okay.
And I I didn't know the last sentence, I don't know really what, I don't know if we really needed it. The Commissioners believe that any employees or citizens should have the ability to report instances of misconduct without fear of retaliation and are confident that the policy hotline will accomplish that objectives. I don't, I don't really care. I mean, I think that's kind of been set up above, but I think those were my only changes.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yes, it is.
It's fine, so let's get that.
You want me to take out that last sentence?
Well, I thought we'd kind of said it already.
I think the intent of that last sentence was just on the anonymity factor, the fact that they're, you know, they can report this and it'll be followed up on, but they don't have to disclose who they are, so they can't be retaliated against. So that was one of the components.
Why not say that then? Why not say, have the ability to report instances with non of contact with anonymous, whatever that word is, anon anonymously?
Anonymously, yes.
And without fear, that'd be good. I didn't know that was the point. That's good.
Okay, I will perhaps make these changes, and then I can provide it to Chair Dare to send out on behalf of the board and something like that.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
So then, we have the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative Charter, and I believe that Deschutes County is supposed to give a yea or nay on that agreement.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
I don't have my copy with me. I gave gave you Tony copies, if he had anything to raise, I.
I didn't review it for substance of an agreement, you know, a legal agreement, but I understand the concept. You know, Deschutes County doesn't do water, the state does water. This is a collaborative, so we can be at the table and be a partner in the discussions. I think of a collaborative as the Forest Collaborative, which was an effort funded at the federal level with millions of dollars to say, if you come up with a prescription that you agree upon, we're going to spend money to to implement that prescription. So I don't, I don't think there's any dollars here specifically, but there are federal dollars that come to Central Oregon to the districts for piping. So, yeah, if this collaborative says, okay, we've got a sticky issue, let's work through it and figure out what we all can agree upon.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not opposed to the collaborative. I don't know that, you know, I don't know that I'd be at the, if I'm asked to be at the table, I'll get more engaged, but if not, I'm not going to be.
We're actually allowed, each county has one representative.
Yeah, so that's fine.
So we should definitely be represented there.
Well, yeah, and I've, and we have, I mean, that's, I've been going to the working meetings.
But the list is enormous of the people.
Yeah, I didn't really agree with, a lot of the people got appointed, I'm not sure exactly how or why. I think it's over.
It's an interesting topic for a lot of people.
Yeah, but it's, some of the people have very narrow interests, and then some have very broad. And I think that was one of the reasons I really advocated for the counties, because we represent the entire county and all of the people, not just the passionate water people, but the people that just like their rivers, or maybe they like their canals, or they like their wildlife that drinks, you know, so.
Who are the great old broads for wilderness? Is there?
They're a group, yeah. I s, I get, yeah, they're a group of.
I doubt for them.
They're actually pretty involved politically now. They were actually, I think, more of a hiking and involved in the in outdoor activities, kind of retired women. They may actually have men in it now, I don't know about that, but I'm not quite sure what what their role is with this. I've seen some of their advocacy on other issues, and they, yeah, I didn't have much input on the membership. Some of them were appointed when I was at a meeting, I wasn't there, and I'm not sure who's deciding that. And I have some questions about some of the membership. Like, COIC itself is a member, as well as being the facilitator of it, which seems kind of odd.
Voting member?
Yeah, or, I didn't quite get why, how that happened, and the the real goal of this was really to continue the life of the basin study, basin water study group and that collective collaborative atmosphere they had there. But it's kind of, we even saw it in that thing we were looking at Monday, that there's division about stuff.
As I say, I mean, if there's a commissioner, so if Deschutes County signs on, that's fine, not opposed. One commissioner makes its, his or her life's mission to be there every time they have a meeting, that's fine, too.
Yeah.
And if I was selected and asked to be there, I could represent also. So, yeah, as I say, I'm not opposed to it at all. But is there going to be a good effective decision making?
I don't think we were invited to the stakeholders kickoff meeting September 30, 2009.
No, we weren't. It was, they had left out our county, which was surprising, and so that, this kind of got underway. But I, there were times to get more comments, but I really see us as not really directing water policy. We're there to be participants in it, but it's really, again, representing the more passive participants, the 200,000 that live here in our county was.
Is there any cost?
Not at this point, no.
They were going to ask for money from the.
That's coming.
Legislature, actually, is what I thought they were doing, and then that didn't happen, or the funding did not happen, so.
If you, you know, my feeling was that, again, it's kind of like the basin study work group, being a part of it, being at the meetings, listening and learning about it, if you think we should contest, or bring up some of these charter points, we could still, some people have already signed the charter, so, you know, some of the groups were fine with it, it was kind of, but they have a working group, and then they have a planning group, it's kind of like.
Well, today would be, just, is the Board of Commissioners, the front end of Deschutes County, agree to be part of a water collaborative that exists, that's forming right now in central Oregon? As I say, I'm not opposed to it, and I don't see that as one of the things I'd be attending either, so.
Do we need a vote on that?
So, the version I got characterized it as a final proposal, but there's not a signature block on it or anything, so I don't know if there's still decisions to be made on a formal document that would be circulated to the members for execution and signature.
You know, I don't know that either, they had a planning schedule, but it's, then they moved it, so it's not till a couple weeks from now, so. Well, I think we could just vote as whether in favor of, you know, participating in it, in some form or fashion.
Does someone wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
For the discussion, Commissioner Henderson?
I hope it's a good opportunity for us to have good input on the water policy in our county, and the future of water policy in our county.
And water is always interesting, and it's definitely engaging topic, is this gonna be a substantive decision space or not, you know, which is kind of unknown at this point.
So, I will follow up with.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the chair votes yes.
You know, Scott can just call me, I mean, he doesn't, but, you know, I was on that grant thing with him also, but, but yeah, go ahead and follow up and.
Yeah, I'll let him know about the board's vote today, and the participation, and if there's gonna be a final document that will be asked to execute.
Interesting, the tribes have two seats, the Confederate tribes of the Warm Springs, and the irrigation districts only have three seats. Where are the farmers?
Well, a couple of those groups are farmer groups, I have to look at the list, I think.
Well, this says local environmental groups, I don't, the Deschutes River Conservancy, the Central Oregon Cities Organization, where are, okay, here's a whole group of the Forest Service, and the BLM, and all those groups, but where are the farmers? Yeah.
Well, I know there's a couple present, and then somewhat they're also represented with the irrigation districts, because they're part of the.
Right.
They're, they drive, they're very involved in all this water policy. I'm more concerned with the, you know, they appointed a bunch of citizen members, that I'm not sure what their connection was, so, I'd have to find out about that.
North unit just listed, so, okay, all right, we voted, great. So, Nick, are you here for the letter that we approved, or we should be approving?
Here's the proposed final one for Susan, Sharon handed it to me right before the meeting.
Oh, good.
Thank you very much, so, yeah, Nick and I emailed back and forth, at the very last line, it talks about other counties and statewide significance, which I agree with, I just, I don't have, like, in my head, which commissioner, when I say, come on, let's go, you know, which commissioners are side by side, or behind us, or ready to go in front with us, so that was my only concept, because we were just kind of debating some of the words.
So, I have, I don't know, did you take it out then, or?
No.
Okay, yeah, so I do have some that I've already talked about with, so I think there's quite a variety of counties, I mean, some on the coast, some inland and up, you know, up in Morro or Umatilla, it's interesting, the variety of, so.
Well, and I know that, too, I was just kind of debating in my head, the kind of, this is Deschutes County's letter, and then let them either give a thumbs up, or write their own letter, so, no big deal, I was just debating the words a little bit, so I support it as it's written.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson?
I support it also.
Okay, and I told Nick I supported it.
Did we already kind of vote or approve, finalize it officially?
I move approval.
He's moving approval.
I'll move approval of the letter written by.
Us.
Yeah.
By us.
DLCV.
To the Department of Land Conservation Development.
To Robin and Jim, yes.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so thank you, Nick, for being so patient with us, and we're gonna get that letter sent out on time, so that's some really good news.
Thank you very much, I'll send it just as soon as I have a signed letter, and I'll PDF it, and.
We can.
We're doing it right now?
And the earth will shake.
Oh, I'm sure they're gonna love it, we could, like, send it with music, too, could you, like, send music first?
Here's another.
Like, something from Gladiator, maybe?
I think I have that theme on my.
What we need to do is go to a meeting and testify about it, that's what we need to do.
Oh, yeah.
And remind, see it, my mom said they can see our shiny face.
Okay, and the last thing, well, okay, we need to do the intergovernmental agreement, I know that Dave made a couple corrections on that, or maybe one or two or something, and we need to approve that document.
Is that with?
With.
Yeah, so I don't know if you were here the other day, I just, or, yeah, Monday, after you'd left, I said, let's bring this up on Wednesday, so we had prepared for this discussion, this is Eastern Oregon Counties Association, we have.
Dave reviewed it, he did give one suggestion to them, I believe it was one change.
And I support that change, which is severability, or something like that.
Well, it's not severable, they took out the severability, severability means that each individual can be responsible for all of it.
The whole thing, yep.
Shared, so he took out severability.
So, that's the only substantive change, it's a 190 organization, Eastern Oregon Counties choose to be participating or not, we've participated three, four, five years, I don't know how long now, by paying membership dues, so this is kind of the official 190 document, there's been some different versions of the agreement.
Does this list dues amounts?
I think we'd already paid our dues.
Oh, I mean, but is it part of this?
No, it doesn't, I don't think it's in the agreement, is it?
It doesn't list dollar amount, it references in 5D, each county's dues shall be in accordance with the dues schedule adopted April 2020.
So, yeah.
Just in terms of knowing where I was, because I didn't, haven't looked at this, but I'm, I've seen a draft before.
Yeah, we've had it about three times, we just never finalized it.
I'm less enthusiastic about this than I was a couple years ago, just in terms of, you know, like, watching the, I don't, the CARES Act funding is an example of, I don't think you can just go ask for, you know, nicely for everything, I think, you know, so I'm, I, I think we share common things with a lot of these counties, but we also, I feel a little bit frustrated that we're not more effective, I guess.
Okay, so, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll move approval of IPA as a 190 partner with Eastern Oregon Counties Association.
I'll second it.
Further discussion, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
I think my only comment is if it, if we don't, I mean, I wanna make sure we get our money's worth out of the, being a part of it, kind of a shared commonness, so, so I'll vote yes at this point.
Thank you very much, and the chair votes yes.
So, yeah, right now it is the Blues Intergovernmental Council Forest Plan is the big effort, which isn't our, in our backyard, we're on the Deschutes Forest, or, you know, the Deschutes Forest is in our county, but getting a forest planned through the system is very important, so, as I say, that's kind of what I'm holding on to, is, and it's not our forest that we're associated with, but that's next, we've got to get forest plans through in the West, the Western United States of America, so, as I say, that's the big, the big nut right now.
It definitely is, okay, any other items? Anyone? Okay, therefore, we.
We've got a full half hour, we could.
Oh, I know.
I know, I'm joking.
We are actually timely, we will adjourn our meeting, and we will be available a week from today, 10:00 AM, the 4th of November, so be sure and vote, be sure and turn your clocks back an hour, and have a safe Halloween, so follow the rules, keep your social distancing, thank you.